We're going to call to order our special meeting of the Albany Unified School District Board of Education for November 15, 2018. We have a roll call, please.
President Black?
Here.
Trustee Blanchard?
Here.
Trustee Trutain?
Here.
Trustee Clark?
Here.
And Vice President Stapleton-Garray is not present.
Thank you. The first order of business is to approve the agenda. There's only one item on the agenda, which is a discussion of temporary housing for elementary students during construction. I'm assuming that you don't want any changes to this agenda, so can somebody make a motion to?
I move that we approve the agenda.
A second act?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so as I stated, the purpose of this meeting is to discuss the temporary housing. The superintendent can explain her preferred option and how she came to that preference. The main reason we're here is to both inform the public and to hear from you. So after the superintendent gives her presentation, we will open it up to public comment, and we'll only ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less to give everyone else a chance to talk, and that if somebody else already made your point, you just say, "I agree with them," and don't repeat it. With that, let's hear from the superintendent.
Thank you, trustees and everyone for coming tonight. I really appreciate that after a very long day, we do have our staff here to answer questions and provide additional input after my presentation. And I do want to thank the audience also for braving the poor quality weather, the air quality, to be here tonight, so thank you. So hopefully Dax can help me. I'm going to show just the first few slides of what I presented at the last meeting. I did add a couple of slides I wanted to share, so can you go to the first slide, please? The criteria that we're using for temporary housing is we need to find housing for Oceanview students during the construction phase of the renovation rebuild of Oceanview. And students are going to need to be temporarily housed on a campus during construction, and the four criteria that I was looking at is keeping OV and Marin students in Albany schools, maximizing our bond funds for school construction, keeping before and after care programs in Albany, and staff who provide services also stay in Albany. I've met several times with our site level administrators and district administrators to work on a plan that will keep our students in Albany. There are a lot of challenges that we've been working out. We've been working on this for the better part of a year, at least we've been in discussions over a year. So at the last board meeting, the board did ask me to check on some schools, and we'll get to that in a minute. Can you go to the next slide, please? So this is my recommendation, that we keep Oceanview Marin students again in Albany. Oops, excuse me. Oops, sorry. No, no, you're fine. Leave that one there, that's a rationale. So the plan is to have kindergarten students at Marin and Cornell in an AM/PM schedule, grades one through three at Albany Middle School, and grades four and five at the high school. And so I really wanted to look at a portable school, and in order for, there's no current space to put a portable school. We would have to potentially, if we had to put an entire portable school, it would be going into Oceanview Park, which would impact sports activities there. It is cost prohibitive, in my opinion, to purchase and lease additional portables, in that every dollar that we spend, if it's bond dollars, on additional portables means it's less bond dollars to pay for the construction of our schools. Leasing a school is also cost prohibitive. Again, every bond dollar that we spend is less for our schools. I did look at, the board asked me to look at some other schools. Can you go to the next slide, please? We looked at Tahia Day School, it's at 2603 Tasahara in El Cerrito. It is currently in escrow, and it is being currently used through November. Alvarado School, which is in West Contra Costa County, is not available. Glenville Elementary School, it's called At Santa Fe, I think that's another school name there, and this is in Oakland, that is also not available. It is currently in use as interim housing by Oakland Unified School District. They did say that we could check back with them in a year. Bright Star is right on Marin, I think it's right across the street from Marin School. I found out that that property, we believe, is also in escrow. So it's a very small property as well. So those are the four schools that I checked out. Next slide, please. Okay. So I asked our elementary principals, what would an AM/PM schedule look like? 3.2 hours a day instructional minutes, and currently we have three hours and 45 minutes currently, so it would be three hours and 20 minutes, yes. Students who participate in the before and after care program would be offered, the same as it is now, the students would be offered lunch, and we would still keep the free and reduced lunch program. Snacks will be, snack breaks are provided, and you know, library PE music will continue to be offered as well. We want to make sure that we'll keep the required PE minutes, and the two credential teachers will be in the same classroom for portions of the day. So it's very similar to the AM/PM schedule that Albany Unified had previously. Every slide after this, yeah, go to the next slide, sorry. These are the same slides that I showed to the board, I'll go through these very quickly. We did, so it's option one, go to the next slide, please. There was an option 1A, keeping TK at ACC. Option 2 was to postpone the construction for one year. Option 3 was to build a portable school. Option 4 was to lease the school site. I want to, I really wanted to just maximize the time that the board can discuss this and then ask staff to comment as well, but some of the challenges that we are having is to make sure that we have adequate space for before and after school, that we have space for grade level assemblies, that we have space for PE, other activities, and not that it rains that much in California, at least maybe more recently. We do need to at least prepare for the possibility of things like rainy day lunch. So library, we need to look at that as well. And of course, play space. So we have our three elementary principals, our ACC director, middle school administrators are here. Do we have any high school lips? I can't see to the end. Okay, thank you. And we also have our district directors here, and I believe that there are probably some teachers here as well. So with that, I'd like to turn it back over to the board for discussion.
Can you just turn the slide to option 1? No, just a short one. Okay, so this is the superintendent's preferred option, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, do you want to run through it just really quickly, so that the audience knows what we're talking about?
Sure. Okay, so again, TK would stay at ACC for an AM/PM schedule. Again, the kinders in the AM/PM schedule at Cornell and Marin, grades one through three at the Albany Middle School Annex, and grades four and five are going to stay at Oceanview until the Albany High School new addition is available, and then they would move over to the new addition at that time.
Okay, so, Cam?
Can the superintendent describe the process that led to the four options, and then to the choice of option 1 as the preferred option?
Yes, thank you. Meeting with our site administrators, and having several meetings to talk about what were, a list of things that, things that we had to consider. So we created a list of what do we need to consider? We need to consider after-school programs, before-school programs, library, play space, trying to have something that is equitable. What would happen, where are we going to have students have lunch? Where would they have indoor recess if need be, indoor lunch if need be, grade level assemblies? We looked at what are our special education needs. We made a list of, I think I'm partially exhausting the list, but everything that everybody could throw out that said we need to look at: support services, occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech, EL support, intervention, any pullout. Where are we going to have counselors? So we listed all those things, and we started talking about them and finding out what are some things that we could do to make it work. So, and I will say consistently what came up was that space is going to be a challenge, that we had to be really flexible with how space was going to be used to make this work. So we started this conversation sometime last year fall, and then throughout the year, and then of course, you know, it intensified in having conversations. We've had conversations in our principals' meetings, we've had a couple of separate meetings, not, I shouldn't say separate meetings, separate meetings with just like elementary principals, and talking about some elementary issues. We've had meetings with elementary principals and our secondary principals to look at some of those issues. And also working with Anna Mansker, who does our preschool and school age children programs, to look at what are some of the criteria that she needs to have in terms of before and after school. We also talked about what the challenges would be when we looked at the different options. And so some of the options came from feedback that I had received from the board, feedback that other people had sent me in emails, or who had called me and said, "Have you thought about a portable school? Have you thought about putting some portables on the Oceanview campus? Have you thought about having grade level on Oceanview campus while construction is still going on? Have you thought about moving kids to a school outside? What would happen if, do we have to bus kids? What would be the cost of those things?" So it was a long process in terms of discussions, and we are still in discussions. We're still talking about ways that we can make this work.
Yeah, I have a question. I was just curious why the AM/PM schedule was changed a few years ago? I keep hearing that that's why, or that's how it was a few years ago, but obviously we got rid of it for a reason.
This was actually before I got here, so I actually would like to defer to Terry, who can answer that question.
I think there were multiple reasons, but one of the greatest benefits of going to an early bird, late bird is it offered our students an opportunity to kind of mimic the schedule they would be moving into. Secondly, it offered kindergarten teachers, you can adjust the schedule a little bit on one or two days of the week, so that you can have staff meeting and collaboration time, which could still be done if we looked at this a little bit more closely. So those were the two things that the AM, or the early bird, late bird, offered us the most, and it gave us a few more instructional minutes with, as we were beginning to add curriculum to kindergarten, and the standards were going up, we felt like adding a few extra minutes, which is inside a half hour, was a good place to start. A lot of the kindergarten teachers at the time were split in the desire. It also gave them their own classroom. So a kindergarten teacher has their own classroom with an early bird, late bird, but with AM/PM, they share a classroom. So there are pluses and disadvantages, but it allowed us at that time to figure out that we could begin to move more towards what our rest of our school had.
Thank you.
So I wonder if we could go back to the previous slide? Well, no, I guess it's the second slide in the deck, the criteria slide.
Go back. It's in the beginning.
It's the second one after the title. There we go. Thank you. So anyway, I wanted to thank staff for the work that they've put into this, and also to thank the superintendent for giving us a framework here. I think it's good to have a set of criteria in front of us and to be looking at them. Is that better?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So let me just repeat that. I just wanted to thank the superintendent for giving us a framework, a place to start. We can have a conversation if we have a framework, a set of guidelines. And I guess we've been through this presentation once before, and I've been thinking about it a lot over the past couple of weeks. And I'd like to propose another criterion. I think the criterion I'd like to propose that we consider is best supports the educational And I'd be interested in some feedback on that. Is that a criterion that's important to the community? And if it is, what does that look like?
Can you repeat that?
Yeah, just best supports the educational program.
Jacob?
I want to agree with Charlie. You actually beat me to it. I was just writing it down, and I don't see any bullet point about what's best for our children's education, so I think that should definitely be part of the equation.
I think with that, we can start taking feedback from the audience. So as I said before, try to keep your comments to three minutes. Do we have anyone to be a timekeeper? Okay, and, you know, be mindful that there are a lot of other people who'll want to talk, so, and we don't, we don't have forever, you know? We'll stay, we'll try to stay here until everyone has had a chance to speak, but you know, at some point, people get so tired that we're not really listening anymore, and it becomes unproductive. So the shorter you can keep your comments, the more people will get to make comments. And with that, the microphone is right there? Come on up.
It's on? Yeah. You can also pull the mic out, just hold there. Yeah, so I think that the criteria of supporting the educational program with the students is key, and I think the end result of having new schools, the whole idea of having new schools is having schools that will support the educational program and educational well-being of the students. And I think it's important in this to think in terms of the long term, that we have a period of relocation that is going to necessarily be disruptive, but that we're building new schools for the next 30 years. And that that really leads back to this idea of how do we make sure that we have a relocation program that conserves as much as possible of the funds that the taxpayers of the city have decided to devote to this project, to complete the end result, which is to have schools not just for our kids. My kids are going to be out of Oceanview by the time this program is done. If there's a disruption, it's going to be, you know, to my kids at the middle school, who won't get to be in the annex before, maybe before they leave the middle school. But it's the idea of not just our own kids, but the kids of the whole city, of everybody who's, all the families here, what are we going to create for them to have for the next 10, 20, 30 years? And how do we maximize the best possible result for that? And I think that the plan that's been come up, that the superintendent has come up with, option 1, because it does conserve those resources as much as possible, is the optimum result, so that we get the best possible school for our city for the next 10, 20, 30 years to come out of this process. And I think as a member of the Oceanview community, I'm willing to accept the disruption that comes with that to produce the best possible school for our neighborhood.
Thank you.
If you're comfortable with it, please introduce yourself, just so that we can all get to know each other. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Richard Liu. I'm a, I'll be a middle school math teacher, and I want to give you kind of a boots-on-the-ground perspective of what's going on at the middle school, and as you talk about quality of education, I want to speak to that as well. Albany Middle School is overcrowded. It simply wasn't meant to accommodate as many students as it does. It's meant for about 600, and we've swelled to about over 900 right now. And increasing to over 900 also increases the staffing. And with the increase of the kids, we've needed portable to the parking lot, which has pushed, which has increased, you know, the amount of teachers needed and the space needed, and now we've pushed the teacher cars into the community. And I bring that up because every morning when I park my car and I am walking towards a school, I get dirty looks from the neighbors. And it's because we overwhelm their streets, and it's because we have too many teachers and we have no parking lot. The thing is, I completely understand where they're coming from. Imagine 60-plus cars descending upon your neighborhood, your residential neighborhood every morning, and just parking everywhere. It's not a good feeling. It's really annoying, and I totally understand it, and here there's a rumor that they're trying to get part of the street permit parking four hours to get us out of there. So that's one piece. It's like, it's not a good feeling for me to start work getting dirty looks from the neighbors. The second piece is that recently I noticed that when quality educators, quality teachers get hired at the middle school, and when they get there, they feel shafted. And I think the reason they feel shafted is that when they get there, they realize that they're teaching in three different classrooms, pushing a cart from room to room. Teachers typically expect when they start at a school, they have their own room, and they can set up in a content-rich environment that reflects their content. Instead, at AMS, one of the top schools in the area, a single classroom can house a French class, an English class, a history class, and a math class within the course of a day. Is this a quality, because of that, is the quality of education compromised? Absolutely, I guarantee you it is. I've been teaching at AMS for over 15 years, and in the entire time, I've never had a single classroom to myself. In fact, there was one year I was in four different rooms teaching. Each of those rooms is shared by anywhere from three to six teachers. In that situation, could I put up posters to support my learning? I can't. Can I put up student work to affirm their learning? No, I can't. Can I stay after class to answer questions or give help? No, I'm packing up to get ready to move on to my next class, which might be all the way across campus and pushing my cart, my materials. So absolutely, student education is compromised by the overcrowding. If anything, often enough times I have to cut my instruction short to accommodate for that physical move through crowded hallways to the next room. Now, we teachers have to deal with a lot. There's different student needs, supporting families, paperwork, lesson prep. These are tasks that we fully expect and are part of the job. However, it truly wears on our morale and taxes our energies to be in an overcrowded school. Not only that, the quality of student instruction is compromised by the overcrowding, which by my estimation is an unacceptable cost. The costs are simply too great. Number one, not being able to track quality teachers due to unacceptably poor teaching conditions. Number two, compromising the quality of student education because classrooms are not optimized for content learning, and teachers have to navigate through all these extra obstacles. Number three, neighbors despising teachers and staff because we're overtaking their streets every day. The annex was to be the light at the end of our tunnel, the hope to right the ship after years of compromising our instruction and just squeaking by. Adding three grade levels with just 300-plus students and 20 or more staffs will absolutely overrun the neighborhood. Our schools will be the scourge of the immediate neighborhood. I plead with you, beg with you, to consider any solution that decreases the impact on the community and starts to raise the quality of middle school education back to where it rightfully should be. Find a solution that allows AMS students to start using the annex, at least partially, that was intended for AMS use to alleviate the overcrowding and decreases the number of Oceanview students and staff that will use the annex, which would further increase the impact on the community. To not do so would be a tragic misstep in the history of Albany education. Thank you.
(APPLAUSE).
Hi, I'm Jeff Watts. I'm a parent of a child here at Oceanview. I'd like to comment on the AM/PM kindergarten setup. You mentioned the disruption to the number, the reduction in the number of instructional minutes, but it doesn't mention anything about the non-instructional minutes and the reduction in that. And I know there's going to be, I believe there's going to be some reduction in the non-instructional minutes in this plan, and I want to talk about the, what that means to this class of kindergartners. If we don't believe these minutes are important, then why do we have them today? We do believe they're important. I think, I think everybody would grant that. So I wonder if, why it's acceptable to shortchange this class of students in order to preserve some money for construction. I know we need to maximize funds, but it feels like, you know, we're asking these students, you know, we're shortchanging these students in exchange for more funds, and it's not very concrete to me. What would that mean in terms of a classroom? What does that mean in terms of a building? What would it mean for those students to get a full schedule, to get the full schedule that we're giving students today? That's really all, and I really appreciate more information about that, because I feel like we were only given a partial picture of what the experience would be for those students.
Hi, everyone. My name is Becca Burns. I'm a counselor at the high school. I am an Oceanview parent also. I didn't prepare remarks now, that feels stupid, but I just did want to say, I wanted to echo Ben's comment from the beginning about long-term planning. I've been working in this district since 2005, and the example that sprung to mind when we started this process, actually, of looking at the high school rebuild was McGregor High School, which has been in, I think, three sites since I've been here, but probably it's been at every school in the district. And I've been part of some of the, you know, trying to plan to find a home for those students who really need a home, and I'm hoping that that doesn't happen, you know, to all the students who are going to be moving around this time around, that we think a little bit longer range to make sure that they do have a place they're going to end up, and all students have a place that they can feel like is their home. And the second point I wanted to make was just about this conversation in light of the budget conversation that I know happened Tuesday night and is ongoing, and it feels a little bit to me in my little, you know, cave in the counseling office, like they're two separate conversations, and they don't feel that way to us on the ground, they feel very related. And we're pretty nervous on-site. I know that, you know, there's not 15 minutes of my day that I don't have students in my office, so I feel like our roles are important, and are they going to be sacrificed because all these other things are moving? So there's a lot of uncertainty, I just wanted to express that on behalf of at least the high school staff.
I, I, given Becca's comments, I was wondering if we can talk about the intersection of the budget and the temporary housing plan. I think that it's important for people to understand that the school construction is being funded by the school bonds measures B and E that were passed in 2016, and this delineation is extremely strict. So no bonds B and E money can be spent on anything besides construction. They can cover construction, and bond E can cover outfitting the new buildings, you know, and supplying them. Where there is some intersection is if we run out of bonds B and E money, then we would then need to look for another revenue stream, of which there is really none. One issue is that if we did have school elsewhere outside of Albany borders, then I think, superintendent, please correct me if I'm wrong, I think then we would have a legal obligation to bus, and the busing money, I think, would have to come out of general fund and could not come out of the bond monies. Is that, is that correct or incorrect?
You're partially correct. Which is good. So if we have students that are outside of Albany, we would need to offer them busing. However, I would like to do more digging than I already have in terms of research on can bond funds be used for busing? I have previously been told that bond funds cannot be used for busing. Within the last, I would say, 10 hours, I have heard a different story. But I heard it from someone else who is a pretty credible source, but I need to really go back in and look at what the law says. I would have to go back to Bond Council and see if we can actually use bond funds for busing. And the reason I say that is, I heard of another district that actually did use And the reason I say that is I heard of another district that actually did use bond funds for busing, but I don't know what the outcome was or if they were, they could do it or not. So I really would like to research more on that.
But we should point out that any money that's used for anything other than actual construction affects the construction program. And we probably have barely enough money to build the two schools now. So if we start redirecting the money for other purposes, then probably run out of money before we could build Marin. And I'd love it if there's some Marin parents here who want to come up and comment on that because we should have a balanced discussion. Thanks.
Hi. Yeah, my name's Jane Zellin. I'm a resident of San Gabriel Avenue, and our house is right across the street from the new middle school annex. So I'm kind of here to speak with the neighborhood, maybe even for the neighborhood, and just to say that maybe one additional criterion that you might consider is, is the impact on the neighborhood. We're a pretty long-suffering street. We endure, we endure a lot on San Gabriel Avenue already. And I would say that, I don't quite know how this has happened, but nobody in our neighborhood knew that the school was considering putting elementary school kids. In fact, we just found that out in last month. We, we had no idea that there was any consideration to add three hundred more students who actually can't be dropped off at any distance from the school, have to be dropped off probably right at the school, an additional twenty teachers. I really apologize to that nice teacher for the filthy looks my neighbors have given you. I hope I've never done that, but I can kind of understand it. And, and all I would say is there's a fragile piece on our neighborhood right now. We, we are maxed out. And if, I'm, I've got three grown kids, so I'm not anti-school, and we live in a neighborhood that has a school at the end of the street, and we understand. And we, I sometimes feel a little hopeless when I hear you talking about not wanting to spend your dollars, understandably, on anything other than your new schools. So if it's a fait accompli, just consider the neighborhood. Consider the neighborhood when you decide where the entrance is. Consider the neighborhood when you decide to take parking away on San Gabriel. Consider the neighborhood when you start talking about northbound one-way, which would funnel all of the, the entire street into that school traffic every morning and every afternoon. And you, you will be hearing from the neighbors if, if, if we're not considered appropriately as planning continues. So that's, that's what I want to say. Thanks.
May I just add a comment? And Jane, you can also help me with this question if you know the answer. So my understanding is that the city staff are working on whatever they're going to do in terms of drop-off zones and so forth. And I'd be interested if you've heard anything back from them at this point. Where they left it was that they were going to get back to you as residents of that street and kind of work with you.
Thanks. Yes, Charlie came to a neighborhood meeting that the city attended after the neighbors were pretty upset about plans that seemed to be proceeding without us. So I did check back in with Jeff today, and, because he had promised us a plan within one to two weeks, and today is two weeks. And the response I got was that he was running it by the school to make sure that he hadn't forgotten anything or hadn't missed anything, and that he would get it to us soon. Thanks, Charlie.
I, I can also add to that. I, I do have that email from the city, and I had a chance to review it a little bit this evening. And our project manager and I are going to spend more time tomorrow looking to make sure that we've gone through everything before we respond to Jeff. So I just want to know, I have it. I have read it, and we will be responding.
Thanks very much. And can I add that we're a little bit more organized now? So do, do send me things, and I will make sure all the neighbors get the information. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jane Lee, and I have a son who currently is in TK at ACC and also attends the Cedars Before and After Care Program. He is a late bird this year, and my concern, one of my concerns is that by moving to an AM, possibly to an AM PM schedule for kindergarten, we're basically talking about regression. Instead of spending, you know, as much time in instruction as he does this year, that will be shortened. Instead of having him, or having him in school currently from nine-thirty to two PM, he would be on a shortened schedule. I saw something on an earlier slide in some packet I received that, where it looked like, basically, he would be in school like less than three hours in the day. That kind of shortening of the time that you have our students is really hard for working parents. Really hard for full-time working parents. It means that our kids will be in before and after care longer than they are actually in school, in instruction, which means that the before and after care programs will have to take on additional burden, I feel like, to provide more enrichment. They'll have to staff up to accommodate the greater hours, hours they'll have to cover, any number of issues. And I'm concerned about what seems to be a lack of communication and coordination with district programs, community programs, and private programs for before and after care. So I, I hope that you will consider keeping the early-bird, late-bird schedule, not only for continuity of instruction for the current TKers like my son, but also because I don't think that the community is prepared to handle a change in schedule in terms of the before and after care. Thanks.
Just before you, before you speak. In the previous comments, there was some questions. You had a new slide that's not in my packet about the AM PM program. I wonder if we can put that up because I think a lot of the questions are going to be about that. And I believe it said that the AM PM program would be three-point-two hours a day, which I guess that, I don't know if that's three hours and twenty minutes or if that...
Yes, three hours and twenty minutes.
That's three hours, twenty minutes, instructional minutes. But is there some information that you can provide about the overall minutes? Because that, that bullet's just dealing with, is, is that the entire program or is that just the instructional minutes?
I'm going to ask my elementary principals to help me because they actually, some of you actually lived in that program.
It's the entire day. It's the, it's the footprint of the day. The kids are there for three hours and twenty minutes as opposed to, in the current kindergarten program, they have three hours and forty-five instructional minutes. But the window that, that they're there is longer than that currently because they have lunch, right, with recess? Does that make sense, Kim?
Yeah, so just to share that with the audience, the, the number of hours that a child is on campus and in our kindergarten program with the early-bird, late-bird, yeah, you know, take, take some time if you need to.
It would be eight-thirty to one or nine-thirty to two, right? So it's longer than three hours and forty-five minutes. Forty-five minutes added to it.
Okay, so I just wanted to get that number out, you know, and said publicly so that we can continue to talk about that.
Right.
Another thing that the previous speakers mentioned was about the before and after care and the, whether that's coordinated with the school schedule. And I think that's something that, that we need to address. Does, do one of you want to talk about how that goes?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Really close.
Okay.
Really close.
So Albany Children's Center offers before and after care programming at the elementary schools. If we're thinking specifically about Ocean View Elementary School, we currently have several portables on the campus that provide care for children before and after school. I've worked closely with my colleagues to think about how that would play out in relationship to option one, right, in relationship to specifically the AM PM schedule, right? So, for example, Ocean View Elementary School currently has four kindergarten classrooms, four kindergarten teachers, right? If we were to look at option one, then two of those kindergarten classrooms and teachers would go to Marin, two would go to Cornell. Currently, Cornell and Marin each have four, right? If we are going to go with the AM PM option, then those four kindergarten classes would be housed in two of the rooms. The two kindergarten classes from Ocean View come on over, and they are housed in a third classroom. That leaves a fourth kindergarten classroom available for a full-day childcare services, right? So I would work with the current Albany Children's Center staff that we have. I would, you know, following this meeting or following the decisions in terms of next steps, I would look to human resources, student services, in terms of do we need to hire more staff? What, what sorts of supports do we need to make sure are in place in that particular classroom or on each particular school site to ensure that the childcare services are available, right? Albany Children's Center school age program operates from seven-thirty in the morning until six o'clock in the evening, matching the, the school calendar.
So you don't have to answer this question right now. You're probably going to want to think about it. But, but a question I have, I'd like to know more about, is what are the possibilities for moving PE out of your reduced instructional minute day and doing PE and library before or after your instructional minutes? Is there a way to expand the school day, so to speak? If you're going to do this kind of schedule, can it look more like the current early-bird, late-bird schedule by putting some, something like PE or library before or after and, and alternating the classes?
We, as elementary principals, talked a little bit more specifically about that today. We do think that we could match a day or two, couple days, where we could put together half-hour a PE, half-hour a library, extend that and/or flip-flop with the morning and the afternoon class. I don't think there would be a way to do it for more than a day or two out of the week. But you could do it, we've done it before, where we were able to take the PM class one day a week and have it start earlier. And when it started, it used some of that time to be in PE, which they're not in the classroom, or be in the library when they're not in the classroom. One of our ideas also was to perhaps lengthen the music program, which is currently, I believe, only fourteen weeks. Extend it for the entire year so we could become one of those rotations. It really would depend on those specialists available during that time, during a master's schedule at either of Cornell or Marin's site, to determine how many days they might be able to do that. But it is possible.
Okay, I'm speaking on a different topic, sorry. Yeah, I just wanted to bring people's attention to the impact this would have on the AMS Theater Program. I feel that theater is often kind of an afterthought in the district. The program barely exists at the high school right now. Some of you that only have elementary school, students may not realize that, but the, the high school wasn't even able to have a spring musical last year. We do have one, however, a great one, with Ms. Penny at the middle school. And so I would like to see that treated as somewhat of a priority. This new space was supposed to be something that would improve what's a pretty dire space situation for the theater program at the middle school, which is, involves when they mount a musical, holding rehearsals in either an old portable that's a shared math classroom or the art room for a large cast musical, and then scrambling for like crumbs of space at the AHS Little Theater, and often having their reservations just summarily taken away for testing or something being always last priority, and not having enough time to rehearse in there. The crew can't really take on the responsibility that they could, I don't think, because they have only a couple weeks to be in the space where they could. So there's a lot of learning that's lost, and finally, there was sort of a light at the end of the tunnel. And it seems, I guess what concerns me is it seems like it's not really a priority. Like even the effect that something in Ocean View would have on sports in the park because it's sports, is something people think about. But I, I've, I, I just want to put a plug in for prioritizing theater. I mean, we have this, at this school, a good program. I, I feel more passionately about this since Parkland and these activists, these kids weren't from the football team and they weren't from the math team. These were drama kids. And I think it's not a coincidence. So I just, I just wanted to, so I want to take care of that program and, and do everything we can to nurture it. So that's all I was going to say. Thanks.
Yeah, I had a question for Val as far as what are the current plans for the use of the AMS annex? Is it going to be shared or is it going to be just one school using it?
Yeah. So originally, my plan was to have the Ocean View students be able to use the, what will be the computer room to be used as library for, bits of libraries we can put into that space. That the drama room would be used for PE, lunch, recess, grade level assemblies. Terry, you got to help me up. I'm missing some things. We've had conversations since then, talking about what are flexible ways that we can share space. So some of the things that we're going to have to look at, and I am going to ask Terry to kind of jump in right after this, is space is tight. We've known from the beginning that space was going to be tight and that we would have to optimize it. If space in the, what is going to be the drama room is to be freed up, then the question becomes what other space becomes available, either on the main, I'm going to call it the main AMS campus, or within the annex that can be used for like programs? Is there, if there's going to be a need for grade level assembly, where else could we have it? If there's going to be a need for lunch, where else could Ocean View students have it? So I think that's a conversation that probably has to continue. But right now, that is the largest space where we can have lunch for our first through third graders. And Terry, if you want to add to that.
Thank you. You know, I think I'd like to start by stepping back just real quick and just acknowledge that in my twelve years here at Ocean View and over twenty-five years in Albany, one of the things I'm most proud of being part of is the equity work that we did approximately ten to eight years ago, where the three elementary schools and their PTAs came together and recognized that there were some inequitable programs in our three schools. Out of that came an enrichment program that brought much of the enrichment, including some of the theater experiences, to the elementary students. But the mantra that the elementary leadership has used over and over again with our community and with our PTA members as they've come in through these years is that all of our kids end up at the middle school and all of our kids end up at the high school. So as a community here at Ocean View that's really excited about an opportunity to rebuild a building that you're sitting in part of, we recognize that the impact and the burden on the middle school and eventually the high school is, is, is serious and that it is, it's going to impact not just the teachers, not just the students, but the community. But as a teaching staff with our students who we teach who go to the middle school, we recognize that we'll do everything we can to minimize our impact. And as far as the drama room goes and/or the computer room goes, if, if through our conversation it's decided that the middle school gets access to it, I'm happy to share it. I just have needs that then I need to work with the middle school to make sure our needs are met. And those needs that the drama room in particular could serve us for two years would give us a lunch room which takes for three, well, two-hundred-and-eighty kids. It's not three-hundred. We said it, two-hundred-and-eighty. Would need lunch for a hundred at a time or a hundred-and-twenty at a time, so it's two to three lunches. Would need lunch for 100 at a time, or 120 at a time, so it's two to three lunches. We need to have it indoors because the outdoor space really can accommodate about 100 to 110 kids at a time, so we need to spread out our recesses. So our PE, which is really nice because it can be flexible and it can be outdoors, it doesn't have to be in an indoor space. So we would be happy to escort our students across the street and through the campus and onto whatever space the middle school is willing to share with us. Our PE's classes are only approximately 24 to 26 students, so it wouldn't take much space for that to occur. But our hope in taking the annex for two years was that we would be able to have a campus that could be self-sufficient and without having to have our students walk back and forth and impact the middle school even more. But I want to acknowledge and understand that the parking, the additional students, the additional staffing, the middle school not able to use a building they've watched be built for two years, has an impact. But again, I go back to the fact, we have worked for 10 years for our community to understand that all of our elementary students end up in the same high school and the same middle school. We are part of a bond measure that our community passed stating that they wanted these schools rebuilt. We will do whatever we can to be good neighbors in the short time that we're either at the middle school or the high school.
So I just want to make sure I'm hearing this right. So I keep hearing the language of Measure B and E and what people want. Part of the language for Measure B and E was for the overcrowding to be addressed. And if Ocean View is going to use the site for two years, Marin's going to use the site for two years after, the overcrowding issue at Albany Middle School is not being addressed for at least four, possibly more years. Is that correct?
For the time that we're going to need to build Ocean View, I think you're correct. The time for Marin to be built, I don't have a solid answer to that, Jacob, because when we build Ocean View, I think we're going to need to look at, do we want to have the same configuration that we have right now, that the plan's for right now? Or do we want to look at the availability of housing more students at Ocean View, which might free up one of the other two sites? And I think it's just too premature for us to really know what we're going to be able to do when we have to house Marin. So, but I would say, I could say that the plan that I have right now is for Ocean View, and I added Marin on the slide for a reason, is I don't want people to forget that we do have to rebuild Marin as well.
Yeah, was the plan all along that Ocean View was going to use the whole annex? Or did that change recently?
My plan was to have Ocean View use the annex, that is correct.
From day one?
Not from day one, it was after conversations with staff.
With everybody?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Colette and I'm a student at Albany Middle School. I've been involved in the drama program throughout my middle school time, and I know firsthand how much of a difference it makes to be able to use a real theater. It's just not the same to have to use, put on plays and leaky portables and old classrooms. Although we have used the high school's Little Theater in the past, it was extremely difficult to get adequate rehearsal time. We were very excited to be able to use the new space, and it was disappointing to learn that many years of drama students to come, including my little brother and his friends, would not have access to this resource. We have a fantastic drama program at AMS. It would be a real shame to see it diminished on account of performance space. I hope people will work to find a creative solution to allow the drama program to use the theater that was built for it. Thank you.
Good evening. Eric Castillo McIntyre, I'm the father of India McIntyre, a first grader in the special education program here at Ocean View. First of all, I'd like to thank all of you who have put some work and thought into making this work. The bad news I have is that you can tell when a compromise was reached, if it is a fair compromise, absolutely nobody is happy. So that will be the thanks that you will all receive. And I lost my train of thought. Anyway, so you are already aware of the request that I have for the special education students. I would like to ask that they be housed at Cornell. And out of respect for the rest of the folks who are in line to speak, I don't want to repeat all the reasons that I have stated before and that are on the record, except that I would like to comment on the issue of transportation and parking. As I mentioned before to you, in formal conversations with the drivers who drive the special education students, they have voiced concerns that the challenge of transporting students to and from the annex at the middle school is going to be excessive, too much of a burden on them. Whereas transporting the students to and from Cornell will be much more manageable and in fact, familiar. So as safety and out of concern for the students, I'd like to again reinstate that you put them at Cornell. And one last request, this is maybe the second or third time that in a public meeting we have seen the plans, and I haven't seen anywhere an explicit statement for what the plan is for the special education students. And I would like to request that when this is discussed in the future, that there is an explicit place for them in it. Thank you.
Actually, Dymary would like to provide some information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. I'd like to state that at this point in time, our special day class at Ocean View, am I on?
Yes.
Thank you. Our special day class from Ocean View will be on the Cornell campus. We have a variety of other special education students, some who receive resource support, some who receive related service such as speech, or speech and occupational therapy only. And those students will be housed, some may be at Cornell, some may be at Marin, or they will likely go with their peers to wherever their peers are going, the middle school, annex, the high school. And I am confident that our resource specialists and our related service providers of speech, occupational therapy, physical therapy, will be able to meet their needs wherever they're housed. The special day class students will go to Cornell. That is the plan, and I don't anticipate that changing.
Hi, I want to introduce myself.
You have to talk really, just put really close to you.
All right, I'm used to the other kind of. So my name is Kari Finein, I am a first grade teacher here at Ocean View. My voice is scratchy today, I think you know why. I also wanted to come up here today because not only am I a first grade teacher at Ocean View, but I'm also a parent, and I'm also a homeowner in Albany, so I can speak to a lot of different perspectives. My older children are twins, and they are now freshmen in the high school. They have come through Ocean View, they went through the middle school, and they're in ninth grade now. They were the last group to go through the AMPM program. And as a first grade teacher, I can reflect on how I received those students in the AMPM program and how they fared versus the students that have had full day kindergarten. But the first thing I want to say is I want to go back to being a homeowner here, because I live at the corner of Brighton and Evelyn. My driveway is basically a drop-off for the middle school. So I just want to say, I have never, ever thought of anybody dropping their children off in front of my house as the enemy. I have never done that. Someone even took off my mirror and drove away. And that's okay. I'm okay with that. Anyway, they've gone through the middle school in its current state. They had a wonderful time there. They had an excellent experience. Their education was top-notch. They're in the high school now, they're doing fantastic. My youngest is in second grade here. If we go through option one, he will be in that cohort that is most affected. He will go from Ocean View to the middle school, to the high school, back to Ocean View, and then to the middle school. I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that. When my twins were in the AMPM kindergarten, they were in the AM program, I remember it well, because I was very nervous that seeing them suddenly go from a university preschool program where they were in there from, I think maybe 8:30 until 5:30 every day, I was so worried about how they would fare with only three hours of school. What will they lose in their education? That's what I really thought. I thought they were going to lose skills. I volunteered at that time, I was able to volunteer a little bit in their classrooms, and I was so amazed at what they were able to do in that time. And something that maybe people don't realize is the benefit of having a second teacher in the room. That PM teacher, that AM teacher that isn't on, is in the room with them, and it's magnificent. They need another adult in the room, and they had it. They don't have that now. So that's a benefit to it, I will say. I will also say, as a first grade teacher, coming in, those kids that didn't have, you know, they didn't have lunch at Ocean View before they came into first grade, so it was a transition for them, for sure, but in terms of their skills, there was nothing missing. Our kindergarten team at Ocean View, I cannot say it enough, and I feel strongly about the entire district, they're rock stars. There's no way, yes, please stop. They deserve it. Every single day that I teach my first graders, I am in awe of what the kindergarten teachers set up for them and their foundation, and they come in ready. There is no way these kindergarten teachers at any of the three sites are going to allow anything to change if they're an AM or PM kindergarten teacher. Your kindergartners will come in ready the following year. So that's basically what I wanted to say. I have three different perspectives as a teacher, as a parent, and as an Albany homeowner. So I am in support of option one.
Hi, my name is Mary Ernst, and I'm here also kind of in three capacities. Mostly, I came here tonight to speak for the library. I work in the library here at Ocean View, and I'm hoping that we will have library space. And I just want to remind people that the library is really important, promoting reading, but even more than that, it's not just people wandering around looking for books, there is a lot of that, which is great, but also, we're teaching research skills, there is using technical, you know, using the Chromebooks, and so, teaching coding, those are the kind of things that are happening in the library time, besides supporting whatever curriculum is going on in the classrooms. And so those are really important lessons that have to continue, I believe, and that we need some space for, not just store the books somewhere and get out a few. I think that would be really difficult, so I'm hoping you'll have that. Also, the library gets used a lot at lunchtimes, and like this week with the smoke, we've been using it for recess times. So the library's a really flexible space that has a lot of uses and a lot of things that go on in it. I'm also the art teacher, and listening to a lot of these things, I'm also a parent. I have six children, all of who have gone through the Albany schools. My youngest two are now in high school. All of my children went through this school, Ocean View, and I have a really long perspective on Ocean View and the Albany schools, and I really love the Albany schools. My children went through the AMPM program, and they are all doing really well, several of them are becoming teachers, and they all have kind of a worldview perspective, which I like to think came from being in this community. But as a mother of six and having lived in small spaces and trying to fit more and more children into that space, one of the things that's really needed is my other job, which is art, because I think you have to be really creative in how you solve some of the problems that occur. Like when I'm listening to the transportation problem and maybe the drop-offs, I'm thinking, oh, there's lots of things you could do about that. You could have the walking school bus, you could have vans that take kids, kids could be dropped at a different location and walked from a few blocks away. And of course, timing plays into that too. But I think that we're going to have to think about all these things in a creative way. And of course, there's so many perspectives that have to be considered. But as a mother, if I have to make a decision about how to take care of a lot of people at once, I look at the people who are the most needy, the person who's most needy in my house, that's not always the youngest person, it's whoever's most, having the biggest need at the moment is the one that I work at first. And I think when the school is moving around, that's going to be a big need, and then to remember that at another time in the future, maybe the middle school and high school will need this location in this space, you just never know. Thank you.
Hi. This way? Hello? Okay. My name's Deana Yu, and I'm currently a teacher at Ocean View Elementary and have taught kindergarten for many years.
I'm Cindy Haydom, I teach kindergarten at Ocean View.
I'm Eunice Kim, I also teach kindergarten at Ocean View.
So I actually wanted to answer a question that was posed earlier about why we came to an extended day schedule with kindergarten, because I happened to be there at that time. And so basically, what it came down to was, we had an odd number of kindergarten classes at some of the sites. I don't think that was the case at Ocean View. And when you have an odd number of kindergarten classrooms, you don't have that other person to support. You have to have an even number for teachers to support one another. So we were, we had a big meeting about it, we discussed it, it was presented as like, let's just try this as a pilot. We were, the teachers were asked, like, what do we think of it? And it was a really difficult conversation. And I think one of the big things was that when you, when we went to, when we were considering whether we were going to move to an extended day, we also were, wanted to be extremely careful of losing that partner teacher. Because as you know, in kindergarten, especially at the start of the year, sometimes you really, you need another adult in the room. And it's not just another adult body, you need another professional teacher colleague that you trust and that you know can, you know, step in when you need support. And at the time, I really don't believe that it was the teachers that said we wanted to go to this extended day program. It was more, we were kind of told, well, if we have odd numbers in terms of configuration, like, that's kind of what it's going to be at, and they weren't willing. I think one creative solution was, at one time, there was a reading specialist who was able to step in and provide that extra support, but the district wasn't willing to provide a substitute or someone who could do that. So I just wanted to provide that history. But I know that the three of us actually like, in really kind of reflecting on this, we feel like we would never, ever, kind of like Kari said, we would never, ever agree to something that would compromise the education of the students. We feel really good about what we can offer, and I actually, I think all three of us really believe that having two credentialed kindergarten teachers that are experienced in a classroom is a huge benefit as well, and we just want you to kind of consider that. is, is a huge benefit as well, and we just want you to kind of consider that in terms of like, just understanding, like, maybe the teacher perspective and teacher point of view.
I agree with all of that, we talked all about that, but I also want to add that it's really important for the kindergarten students and us as a kindergarten team to be a part of a community. And if we're allowed, if we're in Marin and we're in Ocean View, we're a part of a bigger community, which also enhances the student's educational experience. If we're isolated on the, on the field, we're the only students, staff and students over here, there's a whole nother set of issues that come with that, and then we're not part of a bigger community, which will affect their experience as well. So we are definitely feel in support of the AMPM, we feel like we can give them a great education, be a part of a community, and they will have a great experience.
I just want to speak as a teacher who's only ever taught Early Bird, Late Bird. I started here the first year that they implemented that program, and what was really hard for me when we talked about moving to AMPM was letting go of that small group instruction. But I remember that with AMPM, we get the second credential teacher, and I've heard in the past that sometimes they're in the room for up to 90 minutes, whereas right now in Early Bird, Late Bird, we only have that one hour with just one teacher. But if we were to have two, we have that much more support and possibly that much more time, depending on how we work out that schedule. So I just want to put that perspective into the conversation, just to think about how we, especially at Ocean View, our kindergarten team works so well together, we call ourselves the Congcredibles. And to be able to support each other, we're really excited about that, even considering the impact it, it puts on us to be, to have to take down a room, have to share a room, not be able to put up the things that we'd like to. Even with that added impact, we're still looking forward to being able to support each other, and at the end of the day, support your children. Your children are our babies. We would never do anything to put, to compromise our education, and we feel like this is in their very best interest.
And I think for all, like, we're pretty shy people, we don't like to talk in front of crowds, but we really came up here and came tonight because we really want to represent our school and our school's needs. And I think that since I've been here, and I'm also a parent, it's like, I, I kind of feel like our school's like the underdog school, you know what I mean? Like, I, I, that's kind of the sense that I get, and I just feel like I, I didn't want to let this opportunity go by where I, I don't want to, I'm not advocating for our school and for our needs, and it makes us, like, it's really hard. I know that it's not easy in any way, and like, for example, when that middle school student was talking about drama, like, our hearts went out to her, and we feel like really bad, but hopefully, we can somehow be flexible. I think in this environment, you just have to be flexible and make it work, but we really, I don't know, at the same time, don't want to do anything to compromise the school that we're really hoping to build for our community.
See, I just wanted to say something in regard to the AMPM schedule one more time. The trend in the Bay Area is for full-day kindergarten. I actually teach kindergarten in San Leandro, and we have kindergarten from 8:10 to 1:50, so that's five hours and 40 minutes. The AMPM schedule is actually going backwards as far as time in the classroom, and I understand we're all here to do what's best for everybody. I don't think I've heard one person say anything about the teachers aren't going to get the job done. It seems like it's kind of trending towards anybody who might have a different opinion is somehow calling out teachers for not giving the students the instructional need that they get. I'm hearing a lot of, oh, well, there's two teachers in there, and it was such a good plan. Well, you got rid of that plan, you know, for, I guess, one time you had an odd class or whatever, but the trend in the Bay Area is for full-day kindergarten, and I'm not hearing too much concern about the parents. I've got a stack of emails here from the parents who are advocating to not have the AMPM schedule because it's going to be a serious hardship on them, and I would just hope that people will consider that too. It's easy for some people who might have two people in the household or make more money than certain other folks, but I think we need to look at all perspectives and not just, it's already getting where it seems like one group is getting pitted against the other, and I appreciate people here with the whole clapping and, you know, we've heard just from mostly Ocean View parents here so far, you know, if we're all here talking about everybody in the district, the clapping, I'm not sure is helpful.
Hi, I'm Amy Penny. I'm the drama teacher at the middle school, and I want to thank the board for calling this meeting where we can have a chance to speak out, and for all the administrators and teachers and parents and community in the room, thank you for being here tonight. So I've been teaching my drama classes in a very old and leaky portable for, this is my sixth year. We perform our school play each year at the high school. The space is not easy to reserve, and we never get enough rehearsal time there. Because of the inclusiveness of the AMS program and the size of the school play cast, our portable does not have enough room for ensemble members. We have had to rehearse in the art room, which requires setup and teardown that takes instructional minutes away from rehearsal time. It also creates other challenges with moving materials from one space to another. Beyond that, obviously, we're sharing with the art room, and though Ms. Lucci is, has a thriving program, and she's been very generous with us, sometimes that space needs to be used for other things. Our student crew can often be seen out on the blacktop behind the school building and painting sets. On rainy days, they end up in portable one, which is not, does not even have a sink. They spend a lot of time walking around the campus trying to find a water source to wash out their paintbrushes and buckets. We have had no storage space to speak of. We have set pieces, props, costumes squirreled away in every nook and cranny we can find. We usually ask for forgiveness rather than permission, and the lack of the storage space has cost the program in the past because oftentimes, we have to get rid of materials. We just can't save things. And so, I teach also seven sections of seventh-grade drama each year, they're quarter classes, and two sections of eighth-grade drama, and every course ends with a performance of scenes. Our setup now, we can only invite one class to watch these scenes, and I would love to this, for the students to be able to share their hard work with a bigger audience. The Drama Club produces a scene showcase each fall, and all the grades are involved. We do this performance in our library. Again, it's just too difficult to book space in the little theater, and it takes too much effort to get the kids and our materials over there for rehearsal. So there's a lot of running around, there's a lot of just like chicken with our heads cut off kind of stuff happening all the time. Basically, we do not have a home. In spite of this, the Drama Club and our program has flourished at AMS, and a big part of that is because of the students, the parents, and our community. Yes, we have made things work with what we have. However, I know we can make things better. The theater at the Annex seemed like a wonderful solution. And by the way, was one of the things when the community was polled that they really supported and thought that AMS should have a space for performing arts. I don't know how many of you have seen the AMS productions, but theater's a lot of smoke and mirrors. You come into the theater and everything looks polished and like, oh, that was so lovely, that was easy, and you enjoy it, and you go home and go about your evening. But meanwhile, few, except those directly involved, see everything that goes into it behind the scenes. Few see the amount of valuable teaching and rehearsing time that is wasted on shuttling students and objects from place to place. While AMS staff, the students, and the parents are bending over backwards to create quality theater experiences for the students, where they make lifelong friendships and they build confidence, and they increase their literacy skills and their presenting skills and their collaboration skills, and all of these things that theater brings, I'm not sure that everybody really understands what we do, because it's a show, right? So there's no question that Ocean View needs adequate space for their students while their school is being rebuilt. There's no question that Marin is going to need adequate space while their school is being rebuilt. You know, but after watching that building go up, it's just really disheartening, to say the least, that it seems like AMS is not going to get to use that theater for several years. I have to believe that there's a way to compromise. Surely, we can all work together on this and provide both school sites, or all three school sites, with what they need. Surely, we'll not allow ourselves to engage in petty fighting amongst ourselves about who deserves the space more. Many of our students, so many, were Ocean View students and Marin students, and the Ocean View and Marin students will be AMS students in the future. Don't we want what's best for all of them? So, this is what several staff members have been talking about at Albany Middle School. I don't know, it's just another suggestion for a plan. We would like to provoke, propose that Ocean View has two grade levels at AMS instead of three, and that AMS be given access to the drama building, tech lab, and one office. Ocean View could then take four, the four portables that are out on our parking lot to house one grade level at Ocean View or somewhere else. This would solve the parking issue that is already bad at AMS, as well as alleviate our crowded classrooms a bit. I have to say, on top of this, I'm also an academic teacher at Albany Middle School. I teach English and history, so I also see how the overcrowding affects everybody, not just the theater program, but since theater is my passion, it's what I love, it's where I really, really connect with my students, and I see how much value it brings to their lives, I have to speak mostly from that perspective, and I hope you'll consider some of these. Terry, thank you so much for saying you're willing to compromise. You know, like, what I had heard was, no, you're not going to get in it at all, forget it. So I'm really hoping that we can all like unite together as the school sites and as a community in Albany to do what's best for all of our students. Thank you.
You know, as I'm, as I'm listening to you speak, I realize, you know, if you're thinking of years in advance, you're sitting in a room right now that has a stage. We have a school that during the time in which our rebuild is occurring, this room may have opportunities to be used. I worked at Albany Middle School back in the day when our students traveled from this building up to the high school in order to perform its play. I can't speak to the during the school day needs during drama classes, but I know when plays are being practiced, sometimes there's periods of time after school where we can look at some of the available spaces, whether it be the Annex space after school or around childcare after need, we still have to consider those needs, but there is a period of time there that this room may be available for some of that. I know it's farther away, but I know when this was a middle school, we traveled all the way up to the high school to do all of our performing up there. So yeah, we want to compromise, but we want to also make sure that, that all voices can be respected through this, so I appreciate that.
My name is Rebecca Leach, and I am an AMS student. I am in seventh grade, and I am part of the drama program. I am part of Drama Club, and I do the after-school plays, and I love it a lot. And I can say that, I can say the same for all of the other students in the drama program. We love it. We choose to do it because it's a sense of community, and we're, well, Ms. Penny and everyone else likes to, likes to say that we're a family, we're a drama family, we are a theater family, and we, we need space to grow this family, and we, we love the theater program. We pour our heart and our soul, souls into learning our lines and learning our blocking and learning family and community and teamwork, and it's just so helpful to all of us. And we, when we today found out that we might not be able to use the Annex theater for years, we were so angry, because when we heard about it last year, that there was going to be a theater, and there was finally going to be a theater that we didn't have to fight to use all the time each year, year after year, we had to fight to use it, we, we were so happy that we could finally just set up shop, I guess, in this theater, and then it was just taken away from us, and we were so disappointed. So that's why I'm here today asking you to please let us use this theater, because we have pushed so hard for it. We have pushed so hard for rehearsal space and performance space, and we just need that space. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to say something real quick. Thank you for speaking about that, and as far as I know, nothing has been decided unless something has been decided that I don't know about. So I'm glad everyone is here, and a lot of times, people think decisions are made because maybe certain information gets leaked out, but to my knowledge, being one board member, nothing's been decided, so please continue to give us your input, because maybe something has been decided, but I was left out with.
Thank you. My name's Joshua Leach. I'm a parent of an Albany middle student, a middle school student and a Albany high school student. I just wanted to voice my support for positions expressed on the sort of drive for a compromise on the theater space, and I just, Ms. Penny does such an amazing job with the productions, and my daughter's gotten a lot out of the program, so I'm just, I'm hoping we can reach a compromise on the issue. Thank you.
Hey, everybody, members. I'm Deb Brill, I'm the principal at Albany Middle School. This is my 19th year in the district, which makes me feel very old to say, because when I first started Albany Middle School as the youngest person on the staff, that has since changed. And I think, you know, for me, I've stayed in Albany for this many years because of the type of community it is. I think, you know, there's the benefits of being in a small community like this, is that we all know each other and we all have access to one another. And I think, you know, because of that, you know, there's a, we can't afford to not see our community as being one. And I think that that has what has kept me in here, that when we're talking about a particular school, or we're talking about a particular program, we're talking about people we know, and there's something about knowing one another and the faces that we see that keeps us being able to collaborate and talk to one another, work together, and really try to always keep students' best interests in mind. And, and that, that thread of what do we need to do to support our students, I think, is, is one of the things that's really special about Albany. And I look out at this audience, which is apparently from the previous clapping, of largely Ocean View, family, Ocean View audience, I see future AMS parents, right? We're all in the same community, our students all go to the same schools. If you're at Ocean View now, you're going to be up at the middle school with us in a minute, so I, you know, so I'm coming from the perspective of us really trying to think about, in this difficult, this is difficult, right? If it was easy to just be like, hey, there's an elementary school down the street, we've got plenty of money, we'll send them there, no problem, everybody's needs are met, no one would be here in a long line waiting to, you know, have their part of it heard. But what we have is a difficult situation, which is what education is often faced with, which is not enough resources. We don't have enough space, we don't have enough money, we're trying to meet everybody's needs, we can't meet everybody's needs, how do we meet everybody's needs? And I think that's kind of led us to being here, and I understand why the Annex, you know, was chosen to be used for students. And when that first came up, and we were shocked to find out that it wasn't going to, that we weren't going to get to use it this year, after getting over the shock, we understood it, right? We're trying to figure out, how do we rebuild two elementary schools? The last thing we want is for Marin not to be able to get enough money to be able to get finished, right? We want both of those schools to be built, and we want to make that work for everybody. And so I think that the issue from my perspective is that we're trying to force something to work that is not ideal, and we're trying to figure out how to make something work that is not ideal, and it's not going to be perfect, and it's not going to be four years, right? I mean, I think when we're looking at these construction things and we're watching the Annex being delayed and the high school being delayed, we're talking about at least three years for Ocean View, the hope of being able to have Ocean View house Marin. I mean, I know for us, our culinary got caught at the last minute because we're trying to save enough money to be able to have enough money for Ocean View and Marin to get built. I'm sure the similar things will be true with Ocean View. So in our minds, we're thinking six years when we talk about at the middle school, that's what we're picturing, and it's not a short amount of time, that's not a one-year build, you suck it up and deal with it. It's, it's a long time for everybody to, to, to be able to find a solution that works. And I think one of my concerns is when we're looking at our campus, the new campus, there's a couple of different factors. One is the piece that it wasn't, the Annex wasn't built with the idea of having students have recess, have downtime, have lunch, have PE, have library, it wasn't built with that in mind, so we're trying to figure out how to swing that. And actually, the only reason there's any outdoor space there is because our culinary building was taken out last minute, so there's an empty gap where it was going to be, right? We weren't even going to have break- We weren't even gonna have breaks over there. We said, nope, they wanted to put, we were gonna put benches, we were gonna have some rec space. No, we don't even have breaks over there. We wanna have just classroom space. Because the breaks were gonna be just passing back and forth. And so I think, you're trying to figure out, I mean, Terry's got this massive job of trying to figure out, how do you meet all of these different needs of her students in a space that's not designed for that? And then it's like, well, if we can't use the space over there because AMS wants to use it, then how do we use the middle school space, which is already crazy impacted? And it's nobody's fault. It's that we're trying to force something to work that doesn't feel super doable. And I think about the parking piece and how untenable it is right now. And then I think about not only 300 more students, but we're talking about first through 3rd graders. And we can say to families, oh yeah, just drop your kids off at the curb and we'll have some system for getting them in, but that's not what happens. Parents of young kids, and I have two daughters myself, wanna walk their kids in. They wanna walk them to their class. Of course, they wanna walk them to their class. They're like six, seven, and eight years old. And they want to be able to see the other parents and connect with those other parents and say, hey, what are you doing with someone? Say, hey, you wanna have a playdate later? That's all part of community. So, the thought that we have these like, I don't know, three to five spaces where parents can maybe pull up and drop kids off to me, doesn't feel realistic. What's gonna happen is parents are gonna park and walk their kids in, as well they should, right? And so I think that when we're thinking about a situation where we currently can't park at our site, where neighbors are super frustrated, again, understandably, about all of a sudden us spilling over into the neighborhood and then we're gonna add 300 more kids, 30 more teachers, and have, and try to make that work, it just doesn't feel realistic. And so I think we have to weigh these pieces of, how do we make this work so we can still build schools? How do we make this work so the site can meet the needs of Ocean View students? Plus, then you get to the overcrowded piece of the middle school, which I won't go into because you've heard it 20 million times. But again, it feels urgent to us. It feels dire to us. It feels like we are just barely holding on and trying to build a nice, happy community of pre-teens with 900 kids and a space built for 600. And you go walk into our hallways and you'll see what I mean. And so there's all of these different factors. And so I think, you know, the suggestion, and there are a number of teachers who are buzzing about this today before this meeting, and Ms. Penny brought that up, maybe trying to look at some sort of hybrid. We have the four portables in our parking lot. Is there somewhere to put them that would meet Ocean View needs? I don't know, right? I don't know what that would look like. Certainly, we don't want four portables sitting isolated on a field and ask them to, you know, educate the kids. It would have to be something that works. But is there somewhere to put those portables so that we can open up a parking lot? It'll still be crowded on the streets with all those students, but at least then we alleviate some of that pressure from the neighborhood and from our teaching staff. And we open up some space so that there's some sharing. We can better meet the needs of the Ocean View students who are there and hopefully also meet the needs of AMS students and maybe create some sort of a situation that feels a little bit more doable. So, I think, you know, nothing's gonna be perfect. We're trying to figure out a solution that can work as best as possible for everybody. But I would love it if that could be considered as a possibility. So, thank you.
Hi there. My name is Dorothy Peluso. I'm the AMS PTA president, and I also have two kids in the school. I have two kids who graduated from AMS, AHS, who went to Ocean View. I've had a long career here in Albany. And I'm just, I'm actually a better writer than I am a speaker, so bear with me. I'm just here to advocate for the AMS students because I am a mom of an AMS student right now. And I, I feel like, you know, you're all gonna end up there. And I really think that the AMS students are not being thought of in this conversation as much as they should be, especially the drama students. I started, I was a PTA leader in, at Cornell. I started a talent show there. And the talent show is so huge at Cornell that we have to have two shows. One for kinder through 3rd, so it's kinder through 2nd, and one for 3rd through 5th graders. And it's an all-day thing. It happens on the stage. It's amazing. Those kids come to AMS and they are part of Cobrachella, which I started at the middle school, which you'll see when you get there. That is also a music and arts program. It's a day, it's a festival. So, listen, these kids really, really, really need an outlet for being creative, for, for being onstage. Not only onstage, there's backstage, there's kids that do the lights, there are kids that do the sound. There are kids that are in the back, you know, doing the crew. It's a huge thing for them to do this. And they start at Cornell in kindergarten. And they, now, I know that there's not a drama department at the high school. So, AMS is it. That's the last time they have it. So I'm really advocating for that drama space. I think it's super important. The other thing that I wanted to bring up as a PTA leader, like I said, I was a PTA president at Cornell. I've been a PTA leader for years, since my son, who's now a sophomore, was a 1st grader. And I haven't heard PTA mentioned at all in this conversation. What you're gonna do is you're gonna have Ocean View PTA is gonna be split up into three or four campuses. How are they gonna fundraise? How are they gonna have community? How are they gonna, you know, create that community that those fundraisers and those fundraisers afford? I just don't know how that's gonna happen. I would really, really hate for these elementary PTAs, after the whole, the whole thing we went through, Terry, with Equity, would really hate to see it go away. And I know that you need the money that PTA brings. So, let's just, you know, have that as part of this conversation and really think about what the impact of the community is gonna be. Thanks.
Hi, my name's Sarah. I have a 4th grader and a 7th grader. And I just wanna thank you all for being here. I know it's really tough. This is a really hard problem, and you're all wonderful people. So hopefully, we can come to some kind of compromise and agreement. But I just, again, wanna say Albany Middle School is so crowded. You hear about it, but when my son started, I was shocked. You can't fit one more car on that road. The kids are crowded in the hallways and the classrooms. I can't imagine putting 280 more kids in that neighborhood along with the teachers. It just feels very, very impacted. So I encourage you to just go over there someday in the morning and look at what it's like and think what it would be like driving your 1st, 2nd, or 3rd grader to the school. And I also just hope people will consider Ms. Penny's compromise for the Drama Center. It's a really important program. Thank you.
Hi. My name's Eden. I'm new in town. We moved here like a month ago. I have three kids, two girls at Ocean View in 1st and 4th grade, and a baby boy who's gonna be a future consumer of our education services. This conversation seems to be a lot about setting priorities. And I'm here to ask the board how we're prioritizing working parents with multiple children during this time that everything's gonna be thrown into chaos. It's evident that there's gonna be like a limited period of compromises in our future. And priorities are not about everybody walking away with like the slice of the pie that they all necessarily want. If we're gonna be inclusive of all the families in Albany, then we need to make sure that it's possible for the families who work to even access the school system with the same ease as all of the other families. And not imposing burdens on them that are invisible to families with older children or fewer children. Now, I grew up with an amazing drama program that I got a lot out of. And I'm not knocking the value of that when I say that those kinds of programs are about enrichment. And having even the ability to access the school system with multiple small children is a priority with respect to, compared to enrichment programs. Now, I've read the packet cover to cover, and I haven't seen the needs of families like mine really addressed. Next year, I'm gonna have one girl probably staying here, if that's what ends up happening, in the 5th grade. I have one girl that's gonna be at another school, and my baby boy is yet at another 3rd daycare. And now I have like an hour round trip to drop off my kids and another hour to pick them all up. It's great that we really want to have a drama program, but I'd really like to see us talk about the priorities of making sure that I and my wife and other families who have two working parents and lots of small kids are even able to enjoy the benefits of the program, let alone enrichment. Now, I have two concrete sort of suggestions that are definitely not the only ideas. The first is giving some kind of official priority to parents who are going to be most impacted by this change to help them out with moving schools, for example. And making, like codifying that in our list of priorities for how we do school placements for next year, things like that. Another thing is going the full distance and dotting every I and crossing every T when it comes to before and after care. Like, I'm worried that next year, as soon as everything is upended by construction, that the before and after care, I'm gonna be scrambling to find something that's gonna say, yes, we can pick up your kid over there and also your kid over there. And also, I don't know how to work all of that out. And it's gonna be a lot harder next year because everybody's gonna be trying to figure it out all at once. So, these are only two ideas. But I'd like to see some emphasis placed on how do we make sure that everybody can access the school system, can still send their kids to school, can still have a job, and come back to like pick up their kids. And thank you so much for all of your work.
Hi, I'm Suzanne Zalib. I have a 4th grader and a 1st grader at Ocean View. I'm also the PTA reporting secretary. And I have two kids who are in the Ocean View Chinese After-School Program through the ACC. And I had a couple of questions and then a couple of suggestions. What are the possibilities of what could happen next year with the 4th and 5th graders at Ocean View? And what kind of construction would be going on while they were here?
A very good question. Thank you. So, if we kept 4th and 5th graders here during construction, we would need to fence off the area between where they would be housed. So there is a current 5th grade wing that's here, there are some portables. And so, what we would look at is, what is the impact to students in, maybe the noise? I hate to say air quality, but you know, the air quality in construction. We would need to look at spaces for all the other services that are needed. Library, play space. We would have to do some movement, moving of internet connections. We would need to look at how much other space we would need to capture if we were to have students on campus. We actually did consider, and I have been considering, what would be the impact if we kept some grades here? So, if you kept 4th and 5th grade here, then what that would theoretically open is the high school. And if, Terry, you wanna add anything to that in terms of the impact of having 4th and 5th grades stay here during construction?
Well, the first impact that I think about is there are areas in which they would be staying in that would still need to be updated and modernized. So we would need to consider how that would be done. And if you're referring to being here during construction, I'll be honest, I hadn't really given it much thought other than the idea of hoping to get to the high school as soon as it was finished.
I just wanna mention that Charlie and I are the board members that are present during the Ocean View Design Team Committee meetings. And I know that the question, one of the questions that has been asked of the three different contractors that are bidding for the job is how would they handle having, having kids here on the southern edge of campus? And so, Charlie and I do not vote when that decision is made. That question is being asked so that we can judge the contractors according to their answers about how they handle that.
So, I'll just add a couple more thoughts to what Kim mentioned. Those interviews are going on now. And in fact, all three of the design-build teams have considerable experience building on sites that are occupied. We don't know who's gonna win the bid. I'm feeling like there would be a need for some conversation between the winning bidder and Ocean View teachers and parents at some point to talk through what the exact plans were and how the construction would proceed. You know, it seems to me that we will have a contractor who has experience building on an occupied site. You know, that's, that's not in question. Each of the teams has a different concept of what they would do. And how it actually work out is gonna depend on which team is the winning bid. So I do feel like we might need a little extra time at some point for the community to work with and talk to whoever is the winning contractor. So everybody has a sense of what, you know, what is the building plan actually going to look like? What would be the implications for keeping part of the campus open? Could it be done? I don't think we have the answers to that yet, and so I think it might require some more conversation.
And which grades are we talking about keeping here then, besides 5th and 4th?
So actually, the original plan is to have kinder at the other two elementary schools, grades 1 through 3 at the Albany Middle School Annex, and grades 4 and 5 at the high school. There was a question or an option that was raised to keep kinder here and continue to have the early bird, late bird schedule. There was a suggestion that was made that we looked into.
So you're not talking about keeping 1st through 3rd here then?
That is correct.
Okay. Sorry, I might have misunderstood that. And I wanted to also bring up a suggestion. If you do go to half-day kindergarten, I mentioned my kids are in this fabulous Chinese language program after school run by the ACC. At least one of our teachers is here. Would it be possible for you to have an after-school program for the half-day kindergartners so they were learning a language in that time and getting sort of something useful out of it?
So that's an absolutely wonderful question. And some of the details in terms of which specific spaces are going to be available for the before and after care programming are yet to be determined. We need to know where those 1st through 3rd graders, for example, are going to be housed so that then in the next steps, we can look to where the before and after care programming will be housed. There are absolutely some regulations set forth in the state of California that determine some of those details that are, that we need to consider, right? Such as the square footage and the adult-to-child ratios, right? I'm working with all of my colleagues throughout this planning process to, so that we are very conscientious and aware of the before and after care programs and needs. And certainly, that's one of the questions that has come up, right? When we think specifically about the Chinese culture and language program that we have, how might we be able to continue that, right? And right now, it is, it is true that that particular program spans the kindergarten through 5th grade grade level, right? And so I can't answer with specificity in terms of exactly what it will look like, but I know that that is a need and a desire.
At the kindergarten level for Cornell and Marin, at the new after-school programs?
So when we think about all of our Ocean View, the current Ocean View Albany Children's Center students, of which we have 107 children who will be going into the 1st through 3rd grade group. We have an additional 33 children that will be 4th and 5th grade students. The kindergarten group, it's sort of, it's hard right now to determine how many of those children and families will need and want to participate in Albany Children's Center. And so, given that, we have those existing contracts with, in partnerships with those families, how are we going to think about the services that we are currently providing in terms of the new space that we have? It's sort of like as we continue down the road, I think we're at a point right now to determine which road we take. And once that is, that is chosen... And once that is chosen, then we can figure out the path that we make.
That does, and thank you, sorry to put you on the spot. And I just had one other comment. I feel like whatever option we take is going to be really inconvenient for me and my family. I've got the future middle school student, the elementary student. But out of everything I've seen, and I have been kind of involved in this for a while, and I've read over everything, and I think that option 1 that you're recommending is the best option for the most people, and I just wanted to say I support that. And I'm done. Thanks.
Thanks. Okay, I'm just going to have a quick procedural question for the board. The meeting is scheduled to end at 9 o'clock, we're not going to do that. But I'm going to propose that, I've been watching this line for the last hour or so, and it's stayed exactly the same length the entire time. So, I'm going to propose that everyone who's standing in line now gets a chance to talk, and then that's, Brian would then be the last speaker. There are already people who are running out of time and are leaving the room. So, I think at some point, it starts to be a diminishing return on investment. If that's okay with the rest of the board?
You know, that's fine. What I think I'd like to do, I wonder if we could take maybe just a minute or two for the board to reflect on what we've heard so far. I think what's going to happen is people are just going to keep leaving, and then at the end, we won't really have anybody here when we start talking.
Okay, I do want to point out that this is on the agenda for the November 27th Board Meeting, when the board will actually vote on what the recommendation to staff is. So, we don't actually have to make a decision tonight, that's scheduled for the 27th.
Well, understood. I think it might be helpful if we were able to feed back what we've heard and to identify for staff questions that we have, that we would like answers to, before we have to make a decision. So, I'd love to have a chance to do that, just to take a few minutes to do that.
Well, there's obviously something you want to say, so why don't you?
Well, I don't know. Does anybody else feel the same way? I don't need to do this.
I mean, if you want to say something, you should be allowed to say something.
Go ahead, but I'm interested in hearing what the rest of the people.
Well, I am too, but I think it would be good to actually have some sort of sense of where this whole conversation is going. And so, for me, what I'm hearing is, we've moved past options 2, 3, and 4. You know, we haven't even talked about those. So, I don't think we're talking about them.
That was one of our questions.
Well, so that's a good question. So, let me just put that out there, and if you want to comment on that, then please do. Because that's what I'm hearing right now, I'm just hearing no conversation about...
Well, I could say, because it's been, option 1 has been just dominated the whole conversation.
Yeah, okay. So, let's leave that as an open question. If there's feedback on that that you want us to have, by all means, let's have that. On option 1, what I hear are a series of questions that would be really good to have some more development on. I don't know, could we look at the option 1 bullet points again? There we go. So, I haven't heard why TK would go on an AM/PM schedule.
Okay, so traditionally, here in Albany, TK Transitional Kindergarten follows kindergarten's lean, right? The technical definition of transitional kindergarten from the state of California says that it's the first year of a two-year kindergarten program. So, in the same way that kindergarten students receive PE instruction, library instruction, the music enrichment times, transitional kindergarten students do so as well.
So, I think what I'm hearing though is that you actually have the space to continue a TK early bird...
Can we go through the comments? We still have a lot. Can we go through the comments? We want to hear each other.
Well, let me pose my question, I'll try to be brief. So, I think I'd like to hear more about that, like why that would change. So, that's just something I need to hear in a couple of weeks, like, I hear what you're saying, that TK follows the kindergarten schedule, but it sounds like we actually have the space that it could be on early bird, late bird schedule.
I think what you're asking is, can we find out if it is possible for TK to be on an early bird, late bird schedule and have AM, Kinder be on AM/PM schedule? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, if you could address that next time, that would be helpful.
Kim?
So, I also wanted to ask if regarding option 4, Lisa's school site, there was a slide where several school sites were listed, but I wonder if the district has any kind of ballpark figure about the costs of leasing. So, that's one thing I'm interested in here, maybe, I don't know about right now. My other couple of questions would be, in one of the emails I got from parents, there was talk about maybe having kindergarten for Ocean View at the ACC site. And the only way that that could be accommodated space-wise is if we ended our preschool program. Because the preschool has the right number of classrooms, and they have, you know, the toilet included, which is necessary for kindergarten. That would be a way where we wouldn't have to set up a new set of portables for a kindergarten, you know, somewhere else. We could simply use those existing classrooms. And the cost to the district would be a monetary cost of the loss of revenue of our preschool program, and it would be the loss of that feature of, you know, that's something that AUSD has offered the community for quite a long time, is a preschool program. So, there's a tradition there, and there's a value there as well. But I think we need to look at, you know, what is that lost revenue figure?
I would like to actually speak directly to that, and it's going to take a couple of minutes. That is an incredible proposal, to be honest. The proposal stating that the kindergarten classrooms would occupy our current preschool classrooms means a dismantling of our preschool program, okay? It means eliminating high-quality early learning programs for our youngest learners here in Albany Unified. There are clear and direct consequences that the students, the families, the school district, the county, and the state will face in doing that. I'm going to do my best to summarize what those consequences are, okay? First of all, we have 72 preschool children enrolled in those four classrooms. We have state-issued contracts with 55 of those preschool families. We have private contracts with the remaining families. This contract certifies them to receive preschool and childcare services for 245 days a year for 24 months. For example, a 3-year-old child who began with us in August of 2018 is certified through the state of California to receive preschool childcare services through Albany Children's Center till August 2020. If we close the preschool and end that contract, then we have to issue notices of action for termination for those 55 families. Those families have a right to appeal the NOA. The appeal starts with me at the Children's Center, it goes to the state of California. The state of California has a history of siding with families when it comes to the appeals. Ultimately, we as a school district would be choosing to end that contract with those families. We would also be choosing to end the contract that we have with the state of California. We have had this contract with the state of California for over 70 years. What does that mean? It means that any of these 72 families can sue us. It means that the state of California can sue us in violating these contracts. The contract that we have with the state of California is called our CSPP contract. It is worth $664,470. We would be relinquishing those funds. Those funds would either go up for bid for other agencies to grab onto, or it would be absorbed into the state's budget. It is not possible for us to consider receiving that money again. We would be given a bad mark, right, in doing, in going down that road. The state of California would not view us as qualified to receive those funds again because we had backed away from that contract previously. Additionally, the state of California has a priority ranking system for how they issue out these slots, these dollars. That priority ranking system is aligned completely with the socioeconomic status of the community in which it's served. And Albany is not a low socioeconomic city. Basically, the bottom line is, walking away from this contract means that we are not going to be able to receive it again. But there's also other things that I think are really important for me to speak to right now. And it's the fact that Albany Children's Center recently has earned a five-star ranking with the state of California. The ranking system, it's called QRIS, is nationally recognized as the official process utilized in determining the quality of preschool programming. It is extremely rare and highly regarded within the early childhood community for a preschool to earn a tier-five rank, ranking. Albany Children's staff have worked tirelessly to earn this ranking. We are extremely proud of this accomplishment, and so is our county, and so is the state of California. Because of this accomplishment, our preschool waitlist has grown immensely. There's no way that we are going to be able to enroll all of the children on the list. We just don't have space. We have a total of 87 families on our waitlist right now, and we're only in November. We have 72 slots, we have 46 children who will be graduating preschool to go to TK and kindergarten. We currently have 87 families. There's going to be more, more than half of those families are going to be very disappointed because they won't have space in Albany Children's Center. When I work with Alameda County, the consultants and advocates with early childhood are talking and urging us to expand our services, not to dismantle them. There is a graphic that's used by ACOE, Alameda County Office of Education, specifically looking at Albany. I don't know if you can see it, right? There's a smaller blue rectangle, a larger orange one. These are the number of children that are income-eligible, are state-subsidized families, children between the ages of 0 and 5, who are being served, that are part of state-subsidized programs here in Albany. Right now, that blue rectangle shows 110 children are being served. Either it's 120 that are not. Of that 110 that are being served, 55 of them, exactly half, are being served at the preschool. We dismantle the preschool, we diminish and reduce the number of children in Albany, the neediest children, who are being served, and we grow the number of children who are not being served. And I really ask us, I ask us as a school district, and I ask us as a community and as a city, how do we prioritize our youngest learners?
Thank you.
We need to go on. I'm going to make one brief comment about options 2 through 4, which is that the reason that they have been sidelined is because they cost from hundreds of thousands to millions of dollars more than option 1. And if we want to build Marin, we just really can't afford them. It would be really preferable to build a portable school or put all our kids in an existing elementary somewhere else, but we just really don't have the money to do it. That's the only reason.
I have to jump in real quick. If we're not going to consider the other options, what are we here for?
We're here to hear...
Just go ahead and just ram number 1 through. I mean, that's, I can't believe you just said that.
That is the fact.
That's your opinion. We have five board members up here, and we have three new ones coming on. To say in your opinion that 2 and 3 are cost prohibitive, so that's why we're not going to talk about them, why are they there?
That's why the superintendent recommended 1.
And we're just going to, so why have a conversation?
We have heard a lot of interesting variations on option 1, and I'm interested in hearing what everyone else has to say.
Can I jump in on that real quick? Because I want to say that I appreciate an eye on maintaining a promise that we made to our community. Our community is paying a lot in bond dollars to get two schools at the secondary level to address overcrowding, and two schools who are seismically deficient at the elementary school level. And regardless of what decisions you make and how this all pans out, and the numerous, very compelling, competing needs that are on the table here, I think that we would be not building trust with our community if we failed to provide two seismically sound elementary schools. So, while I appreciate the need to consider all options, I also appreciate the need to maintain an eye on the budget. Thank you.
But we can still provide, we can still provide that with another option.
I mean, we look forward to listening.
Whoa, all right.
Please, come on. Next speaker, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jordan San Pietro. I am a proud dad of a 1st grader and 4th grader here at elementary school. I'm also a product of Albany's schools, went to the middle school when this was the middle school and the high school, so I know how outstanding Albany schools are. I first wanted to just reflect on the fact that the air quality is unhealthy, and there may have not been people who could have made it here tonight. And that may color some of our discussion, we may not be hearing some other perspectives. Back to the excellence of Albany schools, I heard some themes here shared, I think, Terry, you mentioned that we need to think about ourselves as one community with all Albany kids, and that they all deserve an excellent education. I hope my kids will graduate Ocean View and go to middle school and high school and have the fine education that I had the benefit of. There's just a discussion there around money and what we're doing here. I think for me, as a parent and a member of the community, the bar is high. People are struggling to get into this district and take advantage of our awesome schools, and that's probably led to a lot of the overcrowding and the competition for resource. And I think that we have a tough challenge ahead. How are we going to make this work? That goes along with the opportunity that the community has said, please, let's upgrade our education even further by investing in our facilities, so we can make our education even more, even better. So, I just want to acknowledge the tough challenge we have here, and I want to encourage us to act as a community and value every single children's education here, not only with schools that are built now, that are operating in a fantastic fashion, but for the transition when construction happens. I have to admit to being a little uncomfortable with hearing about education occurring on an active construction site. I would just wonder about, would the learning setting be conducive to children learning, or would noise or other factors be a distraction? And also, you know, we have to, of course, think about the safety and security of our students. You know, this campus here is a little open, and we want to make sure that every single child is safe and secure in their schools. So, I just wanted to share those thoughts. Again, I want to appeal to us, with our many concerns and our many perspectives, which are valid, to work together as a community to make these important and momentous investments in our educational system here, and to hear each other out and work with each other and think of the children first. Thank you.
My name is Peter Holm. I am the parent of a transition...
I am the parent of a transitional kindergartner, so we will be one of the first to deal with the new AM PM schedule, if that is what you choose. So I realize that there are a lot of not-good options here, but I just wanna urge the board to consider a perspective that I think has been partially brought up, but hasn't really been brought up because these people don't know that this is happening, that is, the parents of rising kindergartners. So I know that this is happening because as a parent of a transitional kindergartner, I've, I get the newsletters, I'm plugged in. But there are many parents out there who are going to be directly impacted by a switch to an AM PM schedule, and kids who are impacted, who don't necessarily know and can't be here to share their perspectives. And one of the concerns that I have for myself and for my family and my child, that I have for these other parents, is that, not, you know, I'm concerned about the lack of instructional time, but to the great talk that the kindergarten teachers gave, that I think that's addressable. The concern is what happens in the before and after care. And I have a tremendous amount of confidence in Anna and the ACC folks, but the problem with before and after care, it is not free, and it is not guaranteed. So there is currently a waitlist. Well, I know there still is, but as of a week before school started, we were on a waitlist to get in to after care. I don't know what we would have done if we hadn't gotten in. The reality is that if we switch to an AM PM schedule, more parents are going to need that service. And so I hope that that's not the choice. But if it is, I wanna urge the board to really think through the implications of it and to come up with plans to address that need, which is only going to get worse than it already is. I don't know if you have talked to the other options for before and after care in Albany. I know there's care at the YMCA. I know that the JCC at Berkeley does take some kids, too. So I would encourage you, if you haven't done that already, I really hope you have. But if you haven't, please reach out to them and make sure that they're engaged.
I can answer that. Yes, we have been in conversation with YMCA. In fact, we have a meeting scheduled, I believe, next week again with our elementary principals and myself. So we have been in contact with the director, and I hope, I hope she's the assistant director. It's their partner team. We have been meeting with them, and we will continue to do so.
And has there been any, in the budget planning process, has been there, any consideration been given to the need to hire more instructors for either the ACC program or to provide tuition support for families that can't afford an increased cost of childcare or like scholarship money for families who can't get into ACC and need to go to the YMCA or other programs? Has any of that been considered?
We have not considered a scholarship program or any kind of tuition waiver for families. And I think, as you said, we, we're a district that is in budget constraints. I do know that there is a program, and I'm gonna have to have Anna talk a bit more about that for families that have financial need.
Okay, so yes, we have a separate contract with the state of California, the CCTR contract, that helps us provide before and after care programming services for families that are deemed income-eligible, right? And need-eligible. It's a, it's a long process, and I won't go into the details, but essentially, when families come to us to enroll, we share that information and in terms of what the income criteria looks like, how much money they are making monthly, and how many people are in their family. We also take a look at their need. Are they working parents? Are they going to school, right? And so when we compile that information, each family is given a priority ranking number, and that's how we prioritize bringing in those families and issuing the either free or reduced, sort of depending upon where they fall on that income scale. We have a combined, for both preschool and for school age, we have combined programming and budgeting formats. We have both the state subsidized families as well as full-cost families. I don't know if that answered your question?
It did. I just wanna make sure that we are thinking about the necessary increase that's going to happen if we switch to AM PM. I just wanna make sure that's considered and addressed. The plan, if, I hope we don't have to switch to AM PM, but if you do, I really wanna make sure that you've thought through and planned for what is inevitably going to happen. Also, I wanted to comment, the closure of the ACC preschool to accommodate kindergarteners, is this the first time I've heard of this? I disagree strongly with that option. I don't have talked to anybody else about it, but I wanna give a plus one to what Anna said. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanna briefly clarify that that idea came to me from, in several emails from community members, and I wanted to be sure that it was fully addressed, that that option was brought out at a public meeting, and then had a chance to hear the pros and cons of that.
Hi, my name is Tina Niazzi, and we live up on Ordway. We moved in here into a house about three years ago, and two months later, we voted for this measure to pass. I have a four-year-old, and I have a six-month-old baby, and it's like two hours past my bedtime, to be honest, because I'm gonna get a 2:00 AM wake-up call. So I'm really concerned with my daughter starting kindergarten next year, particularly because she's kind of the baby. She, her birthday is in July, so she's kind of the younger batch. And I'm worried about her entering into a classroom that's gonna be twice as big, basically, if you guys end up combining into the AM PM. And I'm also worried about the fact that there doesn't seem to be any guarantee that we're going to be getting the AM if we want the AM or the PM. There's been no discussion on how do you get to decide which families get to go to which. I'm really concerned about the before care and after care. I obviously don't have kids in them, but we know of two childrens that are in transitional kindergarten. And the way the parents described this to me was, in a sense, it's just a big room, and they make sure the kids are safe. There's not a lot of inner, you know, programs, enrichment, and so on and so forth. It's not anything that seems promising. Again, this is not from firsthand of, you know, my child is going through it, but it's from neighbors. The whole reason I found out about this happening is because we have neighbors whose kids are in middle school or high school, and they started mentioning that, oh, you know, our kids are gonna be impacted. I'm sure there's a lot of other families like mine who have four-year-olds that have no idea their kids might be impacted next year or three years from now. I don't know what outreach is being done to get more people involved to better understand what different families are going to be needing. Albany is not cheap. We basically have a, we're your standard family of two parents, work full-time in the city, having to then sort out the commute of picking this kid up here at this time, that kid up here at that time, not knowing if we're gonna be able to match schedules between the AM PM schedule, not knowing if we're gonna be guaranteed to get into the after-school or day, or preschool, whatever it's called. There's a lot, there seems to be a lot of uncertainty. So I'm kind of confused why, why it seems like we're not, you guys are not looking into the option of holding this off for another year to sort out all these details and then kind of move into construction. It just seems like decisions have already been made that this is what's gonna work best for the city, so we're ready to kind of move ahead, but none of the details have been sorted out. And to be honest, none of you guys are gonna be picking up my kids if I'm not gonna be able to pick them up. So it's, it just seems like there's a lot of uncertainty right now that I'm not really hearing answers to, other than just, oh, this is what we've already decided is gonna work yet. I mean, I've been standing here, sitting down and standing here for almost two and a half hours, and decisions have been made. Then what's the point of this? Thank you.
I'd like to, yeah, I'd like to comment. Thank you so much for coming up and speaking. Alls I'm hearing is if we don't just plow through, it's gonna cost a little extra money. So are we more concerned about saving some money or more concerned about what's best for the community and all those students? This is just a conversation that we're gonna continue later on, and it is apparent to me, too, that decisions have already been made, and that's not cool.
Hi, my name is Purine Shaw. I'm a Cornell parent. I'm also a member of the Measure B and E Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. I'm not speaking on behalf of the committee. I'm here speaking purely as an engaged parent and concerned citizen. Back in 2016, we, the taxpayers, authorized ninety-five million dollars in bonds with Measures B and E. The current spending forecast for Bonds B and E is ninety-five point seven million. The additional seven point seven is the interest that these bonds accrue, which is already being committed to projects. The point of that is, conceptually, there's not a lot of extra money lying around within the Bond B and E funds. Now, there have been very valid concerns raised by parents, by teachers, by neighbors, by board members about all the options on the table. I'm not here to advocate for any one particular option or not, but just to point out that at the same time, labor markets are very tight. Steel tariffs are taking effect. Construction costs are gonna continue rising. So the thing that we, the taxpayers, have to think about is that based on the choices that we make as a community and as a district, there's a very real possibility that either we don't have enough money to do all the things that we want to do, or there may be an ask a few years down the road for additional funding, whether it be bonds or some other measure from us. I'm not saying there will. This is just my opinion that, based on where I see things, there may be an ask. So again, there's a lot of hard choices here. There's a lot of very important discussions to be had. But to also think about the funding piece, we may be facing some difficult choices down the road of can we do everything we want to do? Or do we need more money to do all the things we want to do? Thank you.
So hi, my name is Sarah, and I have a first grader at Marin, and then I have a two-year-old. And I'm part of a group of parents who have kids who are entering kindergarten in the next four years that I know were probably a lot of the people that have sent the emails and have gone to the board meetings. And I just wanted to echo what has now been said by a couple of parents, which is that most of the parents that I know that have kids that are entering kindergarten in the next four years are families where both parents are working. And so the idea of taking seventy minutes out of the day, out of the kindergarten day for our five-year-olds and our six-year-olds, and putting them in before and after care for an additional seventy minutes is a really, just a really challenging thought for us as we think about what that kindergarten experience is going to be like. And I understand there are a number of interests to balance, and I wanna thank Charlie, and I wanna thank Jacob for the research that I know each of you have done on the length of kindergartens and kindergarten in the surrounding districts and the importance of a longer kindergarten day. But to the extent that we do end up with an AM PM, I really, I ask that we commit additional resources to the before care and the after care, so we have an enrichment component, and that we, and that we guarantee the families of kindergartners over the next four or however many years that are getting that reduced day, we guarantee them a spot in before and after care. So we don't have parents who, a week or two weeks before kindergarten, really have no idea what they're gonna do with their kids. So thank you.
Hi, my name's Madison Lee. I'm a parent of two children who attend Oceanview. I just wanna say that you have a very difficult decision ahead of you. There is not an easy thing to tackle, but I know that I think as a community, we need to back a decision that's gonna be the best decision for the community, for all of us. I do wanna speak to, you know, traffic issues and parking issues. I think we really have to think outside of the box. We have to think about other options besides driving our kids to school. We have to look at ways to walk to school, buy a bike that we can carry our kids in or have our kids bike with us, to make this all work for everybody. I think the little things that we, each of us can do to make it better for everybody, we should all consider those little things, because they go a long way. I just wanna throw that out there because I have options to, you know, walk my kid to school, bike my kid to school, but also drive him to school. And I, every day, I think about what my options are, and I make an effort to really make it so that I either walk him or bike him wherever I go. Because Albany, you know, we are trying to be sustainable as a community, so I feel like we need to make efforts to make this work for everybody. So things like that that we can do, we go a long way to alleviate parking issues, to alleviate traffic and safety concerns. So I think, I just wanna say that the little things we can do could go a long way. I also wanna say, I have two kids that attend the after-school program, and I really hope that the after-school program stays in Albany, that they have an opportunity to continue to go to after-school because it also impacts my family, who is a two-income family that will also have to figure out the logistics if we don't have after-school in Albany. It's a difficult thing for you to consider, but I hope, whatever it is, that we can all support you in your decision. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Brian Doss, and I have two kids here. One at Marin, which is great. Love Marin. Doing an awesome job over there, Melissa. And Albany Children's Center, Anna also. Awesome job over there. The after-school program at Marin is already full. There's already a waiting list. I'm aware of this, 'cause pretty sure I'm on the waiting list. So not sure how that would work. But real quick, just gonna say a few things, 'cause she's got the list. But one, I went to high school here a long time ago, and I went to school in Portables. There was no, that big fancy high school is there now. I didn't get to do any of that. We were in the Portables. We ate lunch out of a portable. We actually had our dances here. I remember dancing with like the prettiest girl in school right there. So we used to have to come here for our dances, 'cause our high school was in Portables. So there was no theater, there was no basketball court. We play all our basketball games at the middle school. So we didn't have any of that. The one thing that students that were younger used to look forward to was that the high school was gonna be built and that they would get to participate, you know, and go to the big high school. And telling my daughter, oh, well, I went to school in the portable, but when you get to the middle school, it's gonna be nice and fancy, 'cause they just fixed it. And then when you get to high school, you're gonna get to like experience the high school that your dad missed out on, so you'll have to tell me about all the great stuff that happened there. So I just, you know, think that it's important to think about all that. Also, I learned a lot tonight from everybody that spoke, and I really appreciate that. Like, everybody that spoke, from the administrators and principals and Val and all the board members and the parents, and the students especially. I think that they deserve a lot of credit because it's not easy to get up here and talk, even for grownups, so for seventh graders, I think that's awesome. But I learned a lot from everybody, so I really appreciate that. And that's really all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Hi, we have the same kids, so that's my introduction. Don't throw tomatoes at me, but I'm here for option three. I wanted to just be looked at further. I emailed all the board members already, like a list of twenty questions. So I'm not gonna go over all of them, because there are a lot of questions. But, sorry. Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. But I emailed the board, it listed like twenty questions. It's a lot, so I'm not gonna go over all of them. But I just want more information on what Marin would look like if money was taken away to do the portable school, and if some of that money could be taken away from both of the elementary school projects instead of only taking away the money from Marin. I just want more information. I wanna see what the school would look like, if it would be safe. If it would be safe. Sorry. I wanna know if it would be safe for our kids to go. My kid goes to Marin. So if something was to happen, I don't need you to hold the microphone for me. If something was to happen, it would happen with my kids at Marin. So I wanna know that the school would be safe, but I wanna know what our options are for building a portable school because it just, honestly, option one seems like a mess to me. I don't want my kid to do AM PM. That's not what I signed up for. I did not vote for this bond to go through thinking that it was going to affect all of the schools this dramatically. It's just not what I pictured. I didn't picture us going to AM PM. I didn't picture the students all being split up at all these different schools. I feel like it completely takes away the sense of community that the schools have. And tons of little, or little to you guys, but big for us because they make our schools great. Like little programs, like the Buddy Program with, at the elementary schools and the plays at the elementary schools that the younger kids see, and the back-to-school night where we- and the back-to-school night, where we go to the next grade to talk to those teachers. None of those things would be able to happen if the kids were all split up between three different schools. They just wouldn't really have those options. So... Also, after-school programs are busting at the seams. So, I don't know how you guys are going to add more kids. They would have to be, like, a whole, like, overhaul, like, done in order to figure all of that out. Also, I don't know how comfortable I would be. Nobody has mentioned it, but things happen, and I don't know how comfortable I would be with my young kids going to school that close or sharing a space with the middle schoolers and the high schoolers. Like, hopefully, nothing would happen, but something could happen. There could be, like, you know, instances of bullying or taking these younger kids backpacks or whatever while they're walking to school. Like, who knows what we would have to deal with? But I didn't sign up for my kids to go to school with kids that old. If I wanted them to go there, there are schools that have that option, where they start at kindergarten and go all the way through high school. That's not the school I picked, because I did, I expected my elementary kids to stay at an elementary campus. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for your input. Board members want to make final comments? And please expect everyone's time and make them short. Jacob?
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. And I want to just not get into their emails, but just list the people who send me emails about this issue. And if I miss anybody, I'm very sorry. And if I mispronounce anybody's name, I'm very sorry as well. But I received emails from Rachel Alkhier, Corinne Kaplan, Erin Rosenberg, Katie Waffle, Sidney Lavine, Lori Mata, Hee Jung Kim, Jennifer Charette, John Destin, Spice Allen Doss, a group of parents who are close to the San Gabriel, Sarah Shaw Cross. And I'm just a little disappointed, not in their emails that they sent to me, but that I actually thought, after reading all their emails, that we were going to have a deep discussion about possibilities. And as this meeting unfolded, it looks like decisions have been made. But I really shouldn't be surprised, because this has been the MO of the board for the last couple of years. And I hope that when we have some new board members seated, we can actually look at all the other options instead of having meetings and talking to people, and then during the discussion, finding out that, oh, well, we're not talking about those other ones, because they're cost prohibitive. That's not open transparency to the public. Some people may think it is, because maybe you want Option One. But that's not how I think this whole process should have went down. And I'm very disappointed once again.
Do the board members want to say anything?
I want, well, I know that I haven't voted yet. So, I'm going to hopefully get more information and think about all the things that were said here tonight. I appreciate all the input. And I will cast my vote on, at the next board meeting. I also wanted to mention again that I think that we need to see a more defined price for leasing a school and also to see numbers for the portable option. Although, the portable option, I think, hasn't, hasn't received more discussion, because it would be, we would have to pave over Ocean View Park. And that, that depends not just on the school district, but also on the city. I want to bring out to the public that there was an effort a few years ago to see if we could build a portable school on the large parking lot at Golden Gate Fields. And that was looked into and then rejected because of the, because of an incredibly prohibitive price to plumb and electrify buildings on their asphalt parking lot, on the concrete. But I hope that we will be able to see those numbers.
Thank you. And I actually have been spending part of my day trying to get some of those answers to, and I do have some. I do want to make a clarification. I did, as I, again, do more research and dig deeper. The laying of Portables, I actually found out, you don't always have to lay asphalt. You can lease with a portable company, and they, and I'm sorry, this is very layman's terms, but basically, they can drop down a portable that is, that, I'm so sorry, but it's like they have, they put things on the ground. They put the portable on top of it, so it really makes it stable. What we do know that we would need to do is that, from the portable to any main pathway, that cement would have to be laid for ADA accessibility. So, I want to clarify that piece, that you don't always have to put down blacktop. You can, and I'm thinking about things like if it's raining, wet, and things like that. I did get information, and I will definitely make sure they provide that to the board, to the public, on the, where our Portables are that we lease, where we have purchased them, what programs are in there. I have a whole list of things. I'm not quite complete, but I do have what they are. And also, what, I think the question was, what before and after-school programs are in there? I did get an answer partially about how much would it cost to lease a portable school? Okay. It would depend on the person who is leasing the school, whether it's a portable. If we drop Portables, we would know if we had how, some amount of Portables, how much it would cost. But to lease an actual school site that existed, it would depend upon who the lease-sour is. So, it would just depend on what they would, would want to do the lease for. I don't know if there's, if there's negotiations that could go on. I would assume that there would.
Charlie?
So, I appreciate the input. It's been helpful. I think there's some information that we still need to have, and it may or may not be information that could come in the next two weeks. One is that I think we need to see what the city has planned for the parking and drop-off. So, I hear that there's a, there's something, but I don't know what it is. So, that's one piece of information that I think we need. I think there's some more thought that needs to be given to the kindergarten schedule. It sounds like there has been some consideration, but around the question of how can you expand the day to make it, to make it work for working parents? I don't think we've heard that yet. I don't think we've heard how we can really let the middle school have as much of the annex as is possible. I'd like to hear more about that. And I think we need to hear a little bit more about how it's going to work having grades here on this site while construction is going on. So, there's a lot of pieces there that I think are not really, shall we say? And if we can get that kind of information in two weeks, that would be great. If not, I see no reason why we have to actually make that decision in two weeks.
So, I have a clarifying question. I think we can get most of this information. I think the question about how can we have the middle school have more access to the annex is going to take probably more conversations, a lot of creativity between our elementary principals and middle school. I do have a clarifying question. The, when you asked the question about having students on the Ocean View campus during construction, wanting more information, can you be a little more specific about what you're looking for?
Well, I mean, our fourth bullet is grades four and five at Ocean View until the high school addition is available. So, that's at least half a year, and it might be a full year. So, you know, it would be nice to know a little bit more about how that process is going to work. And if, if it's going to work at all, then the next question, I think, becomes, if it works for two grades, does it work for three grades? If it doesn't work for three grades, fine. But are we overlooking some possibilities here? So, you know, I just think that would be helpful to have that information.
Wait, may I say, may I say something, Charlie?
Yeah.
This is my fifth year in Albany, and we've been talking about this as long as I've been here. And I know many of you have been here that whole time and a whole lot longer. The one concern that I have is about not making a decision on the 27th in terms of school administration and planning for the next year, especially when it comes to kindergarten. We're doing that now. And the kindergarten parent meeting is in December or January. And we, we have been continually stopped in our planning because we don't know what the plan is. I'm not sure what the answer is, except that the one thing I'm going to say is, in order for us to communicate out to parents and to plan for a thoughtful program, of which we've been doing on the assumption that we're probably going with Option One, if that's going to change, we have to have time to do those things. I feel confident that, with the planning that we've done, that Option One would work for us at Cornell. And I've put a significant amount of time in that with my staff. You know, anyway, nonetheless, whatever plan it is, we have to have time to do that, and we need to be able to plan for that kindergarten meeting. Anyway, I've said that.
Yeah, okay.
It just makes me so nervous, it makes my heart start beating.
So, my question to staff is going to be, given the questions that you heard raised here tonight, and that we haven't really answered tonight, and that you want us to make a decision in two weeks, can you bring us those answers in two weeks?
I, yeah.
Val, may I just jump in real quick?
Please.
One of the thoughts around the portable school, my hope would be, if it's going to be a conversation that you're really going to have, could you please talk to the city? Because you're taking away their park. The half of the park belongs to them, and all of the Little League Soccer and Adult League programs would be impacted for a minimum of two, three years. So, if that's going to be a viable discussion that you bring back to the board at the next meeting, could you please reach out to the city and find out how they feel about it? In addition, we're beginning to, if you're going to continue this conversation, Option One is stepping off the table. When the, when the middle school annex is finished, and if you're asking to delay for a year or two or wait till we put a portable school up, how does the annex sit empty for a year? It doesn't. It gets used. So, once it's used, the annex is no longer a viable, I wouldn't want to even consider the annex. So, now you've lost Option One. So, I just really urge the board to realize that we've got to move in some direction. If you're going to take Option One off, fine, then you're really going to be waiting for a year or two before we find that magic spot where you're going to plop a portable school down or find another one that's open. And by that time, one of our elementary schools won't be built because of the cost.
If I could, I just want to add one more piece in terms of this and remind folks that this conversation started a year ago with the Facility Steering Committee. And I believe, please correct me if I'm wrong, several of you are on it. I believe that we went through the options of working with the city and, and laying Portables on the field. And that, that option was researched, and it was determined it was not viable. And if I'm wrong, please correct me, but that was vetted through the Facility Steering Committee. So, I just want to let you know that that work has been done, and it wasn't an option then. And, yeah, time's a tickin', so...
So, again, I think we're being told that something's not, oh, I'm sorry, Jacob.
No, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Charlie.
I guess I have to ask, was there ever any discussion of Portables on what's now the existing playground?
There has been a great deal of discussion on, in terms of adding Portables on the Marin campus and the Cornell campus as well. And, oh, sorry. And when we look at the number of students enrolled at both elementary campuses, which are, have both grown in the past several years, it becomes a situation where we then have to start looking at the safety of kids running around on the playground.
I understand, Melissa. That wasn't my question, actually.
Sorry.
My question was, here on the Ocean View campus, we have a playground with asphalt. Was there consideration given to using that space for Portables?
During construction?
During construction.
Yes. There was. And the idea of putting students in the middle of construction, the idea of having fourth and fifth grade really became a conversation out of, the outcome at the high school isn't finished, with the idea that demolition would occur during the summer, so there wouldn't be any students here. So, all of the conversations we have had around Portables placed here during construction have been to try to not put Portables here during construction, but having the destruction of it, having the demolition done during the summer. If there is going to be Portables put on the facility during construction, then the design team better know that they've got a plan for that, because we're meeting tomorrow to build a school where there aren't Portables placed on the grounds while we're building. We do have this building, the multipurpose room, and our fifth-grade pod currently staying. It's not going anywhere. That will be upgraded, and currently, the fifth grade is the idea that it become a part of the district office. The spaces in the back, the Portables there, we haven't had that discussion. So, that space back there could be used with the four Portables that are there, but it doesn't accommodate the needs to run a school, because then you have to have after cares as well. So, do they continue to be after care, or do they become classrooms? So, we would need to know, starting tomorrow at 8:30, what we're asking our architects and our designers to do as far as building the, the school with Portables on it. If you want to have Portables outside of the construction, then you've got to use Ocean View Park.
I'm sorry, can I just answer one part of the question, Jacob? There was a question about have we engaged conversations with the city? And the answer is yes. The district owns a portion of the property where Ocean View, Ocean View Park sits. And so, the district could do, right, technically, what it wants to with that property. There would be an impact to Little League Soccer and any other programs in Albany that use that space. And that was shared with me by the city. We've also discussed the option to use part of Memorial Park potentially to put a play structure down. So, you know, we haven't had extensive conversations about that, but that information was raised, I think.
Just wanted to, I don't know what the right thing to do is, and I definitely know there have been a lot of different discussions in different groups. I get the feeling of, like, needing to know information. We need to know information to try to plan and move forward. It does feel, though, that in the process, that there have been a lot of things thrown out and dismissed for, you know, through the lens of whoever's looking at it, which makes sense, right? That, oh, that, you know, that thing's going to cost too many, or the elementary campus is already crowded. We can't handle more Portables. And the Facility Steering Committee did not include Middle School Voice. We didn't even know the annex was being considered until the day of the board meeting when it was presented. And so, I do feel like all, none of the situations are perfect. Yeah, Little League would suffer. We're talking about education, though. They would need to find someplace else to be for a while. That would be hard for them, but I don't think that takes it off the table. I don't know what the right thing to do is in this situation. But I am concerned about, about different ideas being dismissed for various reasons, and other ones being entertained without full amounts of information.
Jacob?
Yeah, so, from the last few speakers, I thought I heard somebody say that it was her impression that Number One was basically a go. And I'm not quite sure how the message was relayed. But once again, like I say, to have all these meetings and input with people, and you have one of the site administrators basically saying that she was under the impression that Number One was a go. And then we have another site administrator saying, well, we've had committees, we've had this and that, and we've decided that that's not a viable option. So, maybe we don't need a school board up here. Maybe we can just have committees who can get together and decide what's a viable option, and you guys can just go ahead and do what you want. But until the rules change, you have an elected school board, and you guys have to go out and solicit input, and you have to bring it back to Val, who then brings it to the board, and we approve it or not. So, a lot of this sounds like it's already been decided. And I guess, once again, I'll just have to be on the losing side of the vote. But, you know, people talk about transparency, and people campaign on it. And this is really looking like this whole thing was decided quite a long time ago. And there's even examples that I can tell, oh, well, Measure B and E, and this is what we promised to people, this and that, when it comes to getting brand-new schools. But Measure B and E, as I said before, also talked about alleviating the overcrowding at the middle school. But when we hear that the middle school people might just not even get to use their own site for up to six years, then it's not what we promised the voters. So, once again, I'm So, once again, I'm glad that we had this meeting and I'm glad there's so many people here watching it. And please tell other people to watch it because I could be completely off. Maybe I'm completely wrong, but from what I'm seeing, I don't know what the words are, but this is not what I expect of the town that I grew up in and lived here to get on the school board and almost pretend to people that we're having this open discussion when the more we talk, the more it sounds like to me decisions have already been made.
I'm going to answer your question. I made the comment that this was my plan.
Okay, so the, the board has not voted on this yet, hasn't been approved yet. Um, we have heard that it will cause problems if we don't make the decision in, at the next board meeting. But the board does not have to make the decision at the next meeting. We've also heard from a couple of people that, um, there's going to be a new board seated in December and, um, they, rather that board made the decision and that's also a possibility. It would delay the decision by a couple of weeks. Um, the board can make that decision at the next meeting to table it and bring it back in December. Um, several of the people on this board are trained as scientists. Scientists always need more data. We never have all the data. Um, gravity's just a theory. Uh, but this is not science, this is policy. And the nature of policy is that you have to make timely decisions within complete data. And in retrospect, they might turn out to not have been the best possible decision, but you make the best decision you can make at the time based on the information you have. And I'm hoping that this board will step up at the next board meeting and make the best decision we know how to make with the information we have. But if the board can't come to that decision, Brian, you guys can take it up next month. And with that, uh, thank you all for coming out. Very glad to have this much input.
I don't mean to labor this meeting, but I really want to make sure that I'm very clear. I'm going to just make a, say the list of things of information you would like so I can make sure that we have it. And if I can't, I can let you know why I don't. So I have, check on bonds for busing, can bonds be used? Can TK be on an early bird, late bird schedule? And kindergarten be on an AMPM schedule? What are the options for before and after-care for the growing needs of parents? What is the city plan for parent drop-off and parking? How is the kinder schedule? How can the kinder schedule be expanded for working parents? How can AMS access as much of the annex as possible? How will it impact with having students at OV until the HS wing is open? And what is the process going to be? And can it work for three grades?
And we want, if, if at all possible, the cost of a portable campus and the cost. I mean, we did negotiate it one time. I come close to negotiating for at least one elementary school out of district. We could at least report on what that would have cost. Both. Okay, um, as close as we can get them. As I said, we will have imperfect information, but that's what we need to work from. Thank you all for coming out and for giving all your valuable input, giving it a lot to think about. Uh, good night. Meeting is adjourned.